Evening, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Sciop Township Board of Trustees in June 25th, 2024. We'll call the roll and then please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoff, present.
Brzezak?
Present.
Carey?
Present.
Noel?
Present.
Reiser?
Present.
Please join the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Brings us to adoption of the agenda. There are a couple of items that arrived sort of late the agenda circulated to the board. These are posed as items G5, the Sciop Township, sorry, the Pipeline Management Company and the Natural Resources Conservation Service RSC proposal. So those are proposed to be added to the consent agenda. Obviously, if any member of the board wishes them either of these items not to be on the consent agenda, then it would go to New Business.
I'd like to have G6 on New Business.
Okay, so we'll add G. Is there any objection to G5 going on the consent agenda?
Why don't you just make all one motion?
All right, so it'll be G5 on the consent agenda and G6 to the end of New Business.
I would support that if that's a motion.
Is there, are there any other changes to the agenda? All right, so we have a move by Reiser, or I'm sorry, a move by Hathaway, supported by Reiser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adopted the agenda. Brings us to Communications. Is there any comment about the communications to the Board of Trustees? Okay, we have, I don't know if you noticed this, but we have added a section to the agenda this evening and this is introductions and recognitions. This is a suggestion from our township manager and we do have an item there which I will turn to the township manager to introduce.
Okay, thank you. I had requested that we include introductions and recognitions in order to have our HR director introduce our proposed person for Clark's director, the PPP director. Not sure how long the meeting will be, but I was thinking perhaps we could do that earlier and then the item will be on the agenda later. And if there are some questions, certainly you can ask them.
Excuse me, could you walk into the microphone? It's very hard to hear you.
It's hard to hear guys, but you're not on or something.
No.
I'm gonna shout louder, it'll be just a bit louder.
Yeah, speak up and I'll try to work on that. Okay.
Very great. Thank you. So this is Heather Schmiede. She is currently with, in the Michigan Nature Association. She has 12-plus years of natural resource experience, including along with the Florida Forest Service, and she's currently an operations director for the Michigan Nature Association. So we would like to recommend a conditional job offer for our Parks, Pathways and Preserves Director, and so we're here to answer any questions.
Welcome. Would you like to take an opportunity to introduce yourself?
Thank you. Yeah, I think Aurora covered the basics. My name's Heather Schmiede. 12 years of natural resource experience, mostly in the forestry space, but I have a lot of experience with ecological restoration and natural community management. Been back to Michigan, my home state, for the last two years and worked for a global reforestation company, One Tree Planted for a while, nonprofit, excuse me, and currently, as Aurora stated, I'm now the operations director for the Michigan Nature Association.
Questions or?
I just want to say your resume is really impressive and really glad that we'll be able to have you onboard.
Thank you. Very excited.
Welcome. The only thing is, it was, she didn't have a job description, or we didn't have a job description in the packet for her. Do we have that?
We didn't have a job description. It may not have been in the packet, but we do have one. We can get that to you.
You have a copy, I'm assuming?
Thank you. Okay. Yes, initially when we posted it, yes, the description was attached with the job posting.
Good, thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
I don't see any other questions. Thank you very much.
You too.
You don't have to leave. You're welcome to stay, but if you feel at any point that you would like to, you're now free to go.
Thanks, George, for doing that.
Okay, were there any other introductions this evening?
No, that was it.
That's it, okay. All right, then we'll move on to public comments. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees and trustee Brzezak will serve as our timekeeper. So we have a time, the timekeeping device here and Mark's in charge.
And I want to make it clear, it's gonna be a strict three minutes and there's gonna be no comment. It's a comment, not conversation. We cannot comment back. On the advice of our, we have legal counsel here today and those are the kind of the rules, rules of the road. Everybody gets three minutes.
Rob Pattinson, Sciop Township resident, Supervisor Hathaway. You have been in office for nearly four years. In that time, four managers have quit, a total of nine employees have quit, most in disgust. Five have retired. Did they retire early because that was easier than continuing in a hostile work environment? Woodhill refused to work with Sciop because we have such a dysfunctional operation. In the summer of 2022, we were on the verge of finally getting a finance director. Everyone agreed on the candidate. You blocked it. Why? We've been three years without a finance director. Why? Of all the people who were here when you started, only six are left. Six. Sandy is leaving when Donna leaves, so that means there will only be five staff people here left in November who were here four years ago. Twenty at the beginning and during your reign, five at the end. That's 75%. David Rowley had high hopes of coming to Sciop to sign an example for the rest of the state about how a township can be a model of efficient, fair government. It took you only five months to burn him out and make him quit. The state snapped him up in a heartbeat because he is so good. Sciop has such, was such a mess, we had a terrible time finding a fourth manager. Because we were so unattractive to candidates, manager Parker was able to negotiate $165,000 for her salary. She is now making $172,000 a year. She just gave notice that she's leaving. $172,000 a year is a lot of money to walk away from, but she is. I believe the hostile work environment is at least part of her decision. Do you know trustee Carey is going to be fingerprinted? This is what you have done. Caused one of the most helpful people to residents in Sciop Township to go through one of the most dehumanizing experiences. This is how low you are willing to go, all because you made a bonehead mistake and put your email permanently on a public computer. This is your legacy. This is what you have done to Sciop Township. You have driven this township into the ground. The most civil thing I can say to you is that you are toxic and poisonous to the health of Sciop Township. You need to resign in shame. You need to resign immediately. And I ask the residents in attendance who are in support of trustee Carey to raise their hands. This is your legacy. Inspiring staff to quit and inspiring residents to show up in person to support trustee Carey. Thank you.
No one else who wants to speak during public comment? I noticed on the agenda that you have Ms. Garrett speaking as assessor. There wasn't a place to submit questions. I took the liberty of typing them on. I have a copy for each of you. I don't think you're under any obligation to ask my question, but I would appreciate it if you would consider it, when appropriate kindness comes, for Ms. Garrett to speak. I probably won't be three minutes. My name is Ben Griffin. I can't imagine I'll be three minutes long. I was here last month. I am asking the same thing I asked last month. Trustee Carey made a list of Sciop residents. This list was largely people who she politically or had personal differences with. Trustee Carey asked the assessor staff to look up the properties owned by those people on the list and take a history of their tax assessment. At the last Board of Trustees, I asked you guys to express disapproval of the behavior of using trustees' power over staff for political and personal reasons. Trustee Brzezak, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that right, Mark, thank you, expressed that he felt that this was inappropriate at the last meeting, and I appreciate that. Since then, trustee Reiser has also expressed this to me personally. The rest of you have remained silent. And for that, I'm back because it's very inappropriate for you to be supporting that behavior. Your silence supports that behavior. There is a trustee who targeted me, who said at the last meeting, I committed fraud. I run businesses here at a public meeting to be called out that I committed fraud. Clearly, Ms. Garrett's report shows, says that she found on, is wrong. And that you won't stand up to defend me is very inappropriate. I need you all, every one of you, to stand up and say, we will not allow staff to be used politically or personally. We will not allow citizens to be targeted individually. That's wrong. And if you can't say that, you need to leave. This is not the job for you. I'm asking you to say it again. I was accused of committing fraud. You should stand up, or me. I work in finance. That's a big word, fraud. Her, Ms. Garrett's report today says, by the way, no evidence of wrongdoing or fraud was discovered by past audits. You need to say that. And you need to say it's wrong to say we did. I don't know why Flintoff, Noel, Hathaway and Palmer support residents being targeted. I don't know why you would do that. But Martin Luther King said, there comes a time when silence is betrayal. I'll remember the words of our enemies, not the silence of our friends.
Thank you, Ben.
Good evening, everybody. Caroline Altmar, Sciop resident. I wish to express my outrage over the recent actions taken against trustee Jillian Carey. I have followed the events now called Sheriff Gate and done my research. It is appalling that trustee Carey's opponents are exploding conjecture and ascribing devious motives to her when the event was a simple user issue that was actually precipitated by a security failure on Super Hathaway's part. I find it appalling that smear campaigns are appearing on Nextdoor that take advantage of residents that have not heard the whole true story. The homepage of the Fix Sciop website has a banner on it that makes it look like a website for America's Most Wanted. I am assuming that that's intentional, but it's oh so inappropriate. The language is so inflammatory that even reasoned folks will, of course, react. It's become clear to me in the past few years of my involvement and observation of Sciop Township operations and issues that there have been processes that were improper and trustee Carey has shined the light on them. It could be said, we've always done business this way, and maybe one could look the other way 20 years ago, but times have changed. Sciop must adhere to all policies, rules and regulations. Trustee Carey has begun to expose improprieties and the old guard of Sciop are not happy, perhaps nervous at what might be uncovered. There sure has been a great deal of obstruction and slow walking of some very important decisions by some members of this board. From outside y'all, it looks very suspicious. Again, the vehemence that's being leveled at trustee Carey looks really awfully suspect in motives and timing. If John Boyle really is the better candidate, let his record of governance in this and other township stand for itself. Oh, wait, there is none. I support Jillian Carey for supervisor, her dedication, deep knowledge, caring are equal to none. I also support Jessica Flintoff for reelection to clerk, being another deeply experienced person committed to the truth. Kathy Noel, David Reed and Kathleen Brandt get my vote as well for trustee. And for the record, this is totally uncalled for. Thank you.
David Reed, Sciop Township resident and candidate for township trustee. MAGA has bribed in Sciop Township. I used to believe that one of the most progressive, educated and wealthiest townships in Michigan was insulated from Trumpian politics and disruptive MAGA crowds. Recent events have shown that I was wrong. The super PAC, Fix Sciop, created by Jim Dries, ex-township trustee, and which funded the creation of a website by the same name, is proof of that. The twisting of facts, half-truths and childish juxtaposition of black and white versus color photos is a page right out of Trump's playbook, basically a kill or be killed attitude with respect to politics and the current campaign. Add to that the recent Nextdoor posting by Jack Knowles, ex-township supervisor, in which he repeats the half-truths and misleading statements and you have a perfect one-two punch in an attempt to knock out a political candidate. This is muckraking at its best. True to Trumpian form, both of these punches landed below the belt. I would have expected more from our previous officials, but they have now shown their true nature. If I may borrow one of Mr. Dries' adjectives, they are both vipers. The offending Nextdoor post was removed by its author. I wonder why. It is despicable that our current supervisor has fallen in with the Trumpian crowd, even after it was pointed out to him that he made a mistake by leaving the email active account on a publicly available computer, which allowed the system to automatically send two emails that were sitting in his outbox when the next person accessed email. He still, without consultation with the township board, filed a complaint with the sheriff's department regarding the computer hacking against one of his fellow board members. And now that board member, Jillian Carey, is charged with two felonies. Do you suppose there's any connection with her candidacy and these false charges? How viperous can you get? Mr. Dries selected the correct name for his super PAC. Sciop does need fixing, but not in the way the Sciop chapter of MAGA crowd would do it. As a candidate for township trustee, I would proudly serve on a board with a majority of strong, independent, cooperative women. So when you see those Fix Sciop signs, think Jillian, Jessica and the two Cathleens will do just that. Fix Sciop. That is who I'll be voting for.
Jean Hergot, I'm a Sciop resident, and I just want to add to the email fiasco. I worked at Michigan Medicine for many, many years, just retired last August. If an email was left, if a person's email was left open at Michigan Medicine and someone else tried to log on to that, the person who left the email open, who in this case would be Supervisor Hathaway, was the one who got reprimanded, not that a person who inadvertently sat at that desk and opened the account. They didn't know that that was on there. This should never happen. Supervisor Hathaway should have apologized. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done that. It was a public account, a public email. I apologize. I'm sorry that happened. And that would be the end of it. I also want to know why the gentleman that was helping Jillian Carey did not also get singled out here, or why Jillian was the only one singled out. That sounds like somebody's going after her, not after the problem. The problem was, the person who left it on the, who left the email site open should be the one responsible.
Yes.
Should have taken it down and followed.
Anyone else?
Trustee Carey, when it's your turn to comment, please share with us how your actions relative to the parcel list.
Bertie, Larry.
Start over again?
Yeah, sure.
Trustee Carey, when it's your turn to comment, please share with us how your actions relative to the parcel list and your so-called fraud investigation were not a display of total incompetence on your part. And then tell us why we should not see you as totally unfit to hold office here at the township. Please tell us that. Carey, unlike you, I asked a few questions and unlike you, I know the facts. I know it was some sloppy work, some inattention to detail and a poor choice of words by a current junior staff person in the assessing office that led you to claim fraud by the former assessor relative to my assessment. You then concluded, if the former assessor treated my property favorably, he must have also bestowed that kindness on others as well. So you created a hit list of 28 properties. You said many on the list were friends of the former assessor. More incompetence on your part. I've confirmed that only three are friends and actually those three are relatives. You, the Board of Trustees, have an obligation to pause your agenda tonight until Carey has accounted for each and every one of those properties on the list. Every property owner on that list deserves an explanation as to why they appear on that list. Clerk Clark Flintoff, two weeks ago, instead of helping citizens understand how their properties came to be part of Carey's list, you defended Carey, suggesting this to be a big conspiracy. You tried to pivot the conversation by suggesting the real travesty was that the assessing department hadn't fulfilled a request Carey had made for information. Carey's request was, what I am curious about is if certain parcels were under, under assessed more than others. I believe that you would be able to run a history? Well, that was a request. What kind of, what kind, what, history of what? Can the system generate a report of under-assessed properties? I believe the answer would be no. Further, this request for information was sent to junior staff who do not report to Carey. As was rightfully pointed out, if Carey had a concern, this should have gone through proper channels, such as the department or township manager. And Clerk Flintoff, he tried to further pivot, deflect the conversation by suggesting the current assessing staff has, the past few years, been doing a lot of heavy lifting, suggesting they were mopping up a mess by left, left by the former assessor. A dedicated 42-year employee, respected by his peers in Washington County and around the state, and a person who several are proud to call their mentor. He waived a 10-year-old audit report, 10-year-old. Many of the results, which weren't inconsistent with other city and township audit reports due to changing state policies and procedures, and portions of that 10-year audit report had been rebutted and those rebutts were accepted. Clerk Flintoff, you're disappointing, but tonight is not about you. It's not about the former assessor. It's not about township staff. It's about trustee Carey. Display some integrity, Clerk Flintoff, and join others in demanding that trustee Carey tonight account for all 28 properties on that list, including my home, my rental property and my parents' former home. Thanks to most of you for what you did.
Thank you, Larry. Olive Gloversen, longtime resident, and I won't be triggered tonight, but I actually took out of this whole taxing and I came over and I actually wanted to see this 10-year-old, I think it's called the AMAR, didn't bring it with me. And there were seven major problems with it. And it took them a year, well, this was under Spalding Clark, for, for the assessor of the time to respond. And they said, oh, I think we both did. So I think Ms. Parker spoke about, it was all gonna be kumbaya and let's just forget all of this, but I'm really interested and I want a presentation because that's a state assessment where we had seven different problems. And I'm not an assessor, but reading it over, I kind of went, hmm, you know, what the fixes were and why it took a year. So I really want to, I want a presentation, or at least I want to have access, because you said the state is, because they do it every 10 years. That's why it's been 10 years. It's not like every year. So I want an assessment, I want to see that assessment, the new one. And there was discussion, and I think Supervisor Hathaway said, oh, we don't need to, and I'm not talking about trustee Carey's email or any of that, trust. I want to see what we're doing in this township on a physical level, because there's been a lot of things that I've questioned about how the township, financial issues, and we should be doing a, for as wealthy as we were. Remember our Mr. Rowley who resigned? And you can go back and everybody can look up all his, his comments and to the Dexter Sun Times about how wealthy we were and we would be going bankrupt possibly if we didn't change course. Well, we still don't have a finance. Nobody wants to touch us. And it isn't because of residents bringing up problems. Personally, as far as the hit list, when I have homeowners association calling me for correctly passing out political literature to recall Mr. Hathaway, I had almost contemplated, but I don't want to always be ruffling feathers, to call the state about voter intimidation, because that's how I felt in this township. And it's not even this board. Previous boards, when I bring up developments or problems and the information is hidden from me, I have a problem with it. And that's all I have to say. I think I was triggered enough before. I'm really quite upset with how people are doing. I know how I'm gonna vote. And I think everybody knows how I'm gonna vote.
Good evening. Jeff Jackson, Sciop resident for 38 years. I wasn't really going to say anything tonight. I just came here to listen and provide quiet support. But Mr. Griffith's statement resonated so strongly with me. I felt that I had to say something and that he said what he said, I thought very well, and I agree with him 100% except for his choice of target. I don't know the situation with Mr. Griffith. I'm not going to comment on that. But I do know that two people sitting on this board right now are being unfairly targeted and they have been consistently unfairly targeted. They have been subject to intimidation. They have been subjects of lies and half-truths. And I agree completely. This needs to stop. We're all better than this, folks. And if you are sitting on this board right now and remaining silent about it, you are implicitly supporting all this intimidation. Some folks on this board, I'm going back to 2020 election, some of those folks had the decency to resign. I can't speak to what your motivations are, sirs, whoever, but I know that some of you are running for election. And I know that I want decent, compassionate, thoughtful people on this board. I expect good leadership. I know politics is dirty, but it doesn't have to be and it shouldn't be here. We're better than this.
Yes.
And I know who I'm gonna be voting for and why. Now you folks and the, and the other candidates for trustee who are running and have not spoken up about this, you have a chance to make it right. You have time to change my mind. I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Amy Milanovich, resident. I also did not plan to speak tonight, but just following up on what he said, I'm a pretty uninvolved resident and I came to this meeting to learn a little bit more. And I just have to say, I am so sad. I am so sad that people who have good intentions are not able to follow through on them. And I don't know who they are. I don't know enough about all these politics to know. I don't know, I would rather vote for people because of their belief in the way to improve Sciop Township and their belief in the way to run Sciop Township than in attacking each other or whatnot. To me, it seems like a sign that some- To me, it seems like a sign that someone somewhere wants money or power. It raises suspicion among residents, and it's unneeded. We have a lot of work to do here. My road is washing away. We don't need to have this kind of crap. So I'm just encouraging everybody to look deep in their heart, question their own intentions. I don't know what they are. I don't know anything about any of this, very little about any of this. But I really am encouraging everybody to do the right thing.
Good evening. Dave Spicer, Sciouacá Township resident. I don't know anything about computers or anything, but I would imagine that if I went into the Dexter Library, there would be nothing on that computer when I got up there. I wouldn't be able to get anything in there unless I had a password or something to deal with. So I don't know how this happened to this lady right here.
Good evening, board. Kathleen Brand, the Sciouacá resident. I just want to say that I fully support any individual or board member's right to have access to public data. And that's what we're talking about here. I mean, after all, the Webster trustees acted quickly to make changes to the accounting services for the Rock Alpine Sanitary Authority, based on their knowledge. I'm running for Sciouacá trustee. I'm trying to run a respectful campaign, and I know that other candidates are doing the same. And I really appreciate that. And just to take off on that, may the best girl win.
My name is Lisa Tulen Silver, Sciouacá resident. I've actually lived in Sciouacá Township for 45 years, and I've seen a lot of shenanigans, but I have never seen anything like this year. I want to speak in support of Jillian Carey, who I think is one of the finest public servants I have ever met in my life. She has been just a remarkable person to know. I've had issues and concerns about the street that I live on, Park Ridge Drive, and I've been trying to fix those issues for years. And she has been one of the few people who've really stepped into a big empty gap where nothing has taken place, and we've lived on a dangerous road. School buses going through huge potholes, down hills. And I've taught, we've talked to all sorts of people. And Washington Road Commission has been wonderful, but it's just been very difficult to get petitions signed or whatever. But Jillian really has stepped in and made it possible to get the few changes we could get done. In just a few days, we're going to be having about a mile of Park Ridge repaved. She went into the money, didn't go into the money, but she was able to figure out a way to utilize the money from the Biden infrastructure package so that the road could be repulverized and then repaved, which is going to, people on our street don't even know that she has done this for us. But it will make our lives, all the people, 70 families on that road, better. And it's because she just took it upon herself to help. So I just want to put that out there, that, you know, all of this stuff I'm reading does not in any way correlate with this incredibly honest, concerned, caring trustee. And I don't know what's going on here, but if anybody is accusing her of dishonesty, there is a problem. I mean, I was a therapist for a lot of years. That's projection. That is not coming from her. That's coming from whoever's accusing her. So that's just all I have to say. And somebody here needs to do a way better job if she's being scapegoated.
I have one thing to say, Lisa.
No, no. That was kind of.
Lisa, I want to give credit to the Road Advisory Committee. I am not, I am only the chair, but I want to give credit to them.
I can say something, though. She can't comment.
I know.
He didn't do this on her own. She did it with the road commission. She did it with.
Please, will you keep going, please? If you have three minutes, go ahead. First, please.
Ed Frudig, Sciouacá Township resident. Been there for over 30 years. And I just want to take a minute to thank Mark and Will Hathaway and Joyce. You know, our venue, the valley, is, you know, they had people come out, and really the fire department, which you guys did a great job with us. And it just made sure that we were safe, that our emergency accidents were working properly, all the batteries were there, we had all our extinguishers up to date. And it was a really positive experience. And we know that our venue is very safe now. And I just want to give a shout out to this board, because you guys really helped us out. And, you know, it's so much negative stuff. And I just want to say that, you know, I'm positive about the things that have happened to help us and even really protecting us as a business that we can keep operating. And so I just wanted to say I'm grateful and, you know, just really appreciate all that you guys have done for us. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Rita Clintorn, and I've lived in Sciouacá Township for 18 years. And when I moved out here from Ann Arbor, I was, you know, I would go to their meetings, and it was just, you know, it was real circus sometimes. And there's a lot of people that I don't always agree with. But as I've lived in Sciouacá Township, what I have really observed is a real slide towards a lack of civility. And I know that we sometimes disagree with one another. And that's expected, and it's sometimes helpful. But there's something about civility. This is where I live. This is my home. And I have friends that have decided to pull up stakes and move out of Sciouacá Township because it has been complete theater for the last few years. It's completely unnecessary. We have some folks who just feel like they have secrets, and they're the only ones that know. And we have people that just seem to find it more important to be one of the actors in the theater and show their friends how they can play the whack-a-mole game. It's just so unappealing. I can't imagine if anyone were thinking about moving to Sciouacá Township, if they watched a few of these meetings. If it were me, I would just turn my head and keep going. I've seen more houses go up for sale in my neighborhood. So when you have disagreements, and I'm speaking to, you know, we all, nobody completely agrees. But there should be some regard for civility. You're grownups, in the most case. We're rarely not in middle school. We're not fifth graders. We can do this. People are not stupid. When they have something to say, they could be well-informed. And they might know something that you know or you don't know. And they might feel differently than you do. That doesn't mean that they think that you are. I don't want to use any language that I might reach out for, so. But all I can say is, this is an election year coming up. We have, what, five weeks till the election? I can't imagine what all could go on.
Thank you.
Just remember to be civil, okay? We do that.
Thank you, Rita.
Evening. My name is Ian Hubert. I'm the guy who wasn't charged. Over there on the top, there is a laptop. And next to it is a piece of paper with the username and password that anybody can log into. Realizing, when I came into the township hall on November the 15th, Jillian said to me, Ian, Will's email keeps popping up. I said, Jillian, let me take a look. Realizing that there was a huge security breach in Will's email, Supervisor Hathaway's email, being on that laptop, I removed it. I removed access to his account. I would do it today, I would do it yesterday, I would do it all day, any day, because I was raised to do the right thing. I can look at myself in a mirror when I brush my British teeth. And I can look at myself, and I can think, yeah, I did the right thing. When I go to bed in the evening, I can do the right thing. When I look at my kids, I tell them I've done the right thing, okay? So I'm never going to apologize for doing that. The next day, I sent an email to Supervisor Hathaway explaining what I'd done and why I'd done it, why it was a breach. I offered to come in and give some training to the township to help them, realizing that this was a problem. On April 9th, I sat in and talked about this report, the N1D report, which was a nothing report, doesn't prove anything one way or the other. I have not once seen this board talk about this issue. And that, to my very core, bothers me. It bothers me because there's some lying going on, and nobody is talking about it. Somebody is behind this. Somebody is behind Fix Sciouacá. If these people are willing to send Jillian Carey to prison,
Yes.
what are they willing to do with our township?
Yes.
You're voting for these guys. I'm sorry, but you're voting for absolutely the wrong people. My name is Ian Hubert. I live here. If you want more details, find me, ask me, I will tell you what's happened, okay? I am happy to talk to anybody who wants to listen, because right now, this is a travesty. And it shouldn't be Fix Sciouacá 2024. It should be lie blatantly to Sciouacá 2024.
Yes.
I'm Steve Newhouse, longtime resident, 32 years. I've just got a couple of questions. I've got, I've stored on my computer 2,194 of everybody's emails for the last four or five years. I've seen the discussion about GFL. We had GFL before township decided that everybody was going to have GFL. They've done a great job for us, but I've never seen any answer why they were chosen when they weren't the best bid. And I hold you, Mr. Hathaway, personally responsible. And I also hold you responsible for 10 years ago trying to push through paving railroad street. And if it wasn't for this lady here, Jillian Carey, to organize us to have a meeting at Delhi Park, you probably would have gotten through with it. So as soon as you leave, we'll all be happy.
I have two pages to read, but everything has really been covered already. Oh, sorry. I'm Nat Sign. I'm a longtime resident of Sciouacá Township, and I'm a witness to the many unprofessional, underhanded deceptions and manipulations by our supervisor Hathaway over the three and a half years. My first introduction to Hathaway, to the Hathaway Knowles allegiance, was in the spring of 2020, when Jack Knowles stopped by mine and my husband's table at the Grand Traverse Pie Company on Zee Road to explain that he was there with Will Hathaway to talk him into running for Sciouacá supervisor instead of running as a trustee. Will Hathaway began his term as our supervisor with our previous supervisor, Jack Knowles, as his handler. And that's when most of the roads leading to Sciouacá became very rocky. First, there were the unprovoked ongoing attacks on Clerk Jessica Flintoff by Supervisor Hathaway and trustee Jane Vogel, and supported by three trustees that thankfully are no longer here. Then there was the supervisor doubling his salary. We also had two trustees that were instructed by the supervisor to systematically refuse to approve any meeting minutes submitted by the clerk. Apparently, this was to make her feel like, make her be present as being incompetent or derelict in her duties. Anyway, the list of bad acts goes on, including Hathaway's refusal to add clerk's motions to the bond agenda to hire a finance manager, which we're still dealing with. Then there was a highly intelligent, well-educated, greatly experienced manager that resigned from Sciouacá after six months, so his stellar reputation would remain intact. A tremendous loss for all of us. And then, it was almost in the same daylight that manager David Riley's departure, Supervisor Hathaway brought Jim Murty, Sciouacá's retired assessor and brother-in-law, to clerk candidate Terry Murty out of retirement to serve as interim manager. And what's the first thing Mr. Hathaway had him do? He had him strip the clerk of her access to the general ledger, basically stripped her of her statutory duties that she is personally bonded for. Anyway, this goes on and on and on. Of course, the last horrible act was when Hathaway lied and went to the sheriff and filed a false police report, or sheriff report. And here it came to her going to the prosecutor's attorney and getting charged with two felonies. Now, all of this is now really bad, because Supervisor Hathaway's handler, Jack Knowles, is now handling another slate of possible candidates. And they are weaponizing these two felony charges to smear Jillian Carey as the potential candidate for supervisor. The fact that Jack Knowles sponsored a meet and greet at the Party Barn, Party Barn, where everyone is so upset with, tells me, if you vote for Jack Knowles, you're looking for the same, more of the same.
I'm Monica Knowles, and I'm the wife of the Antichrist. I'm Jack Knowles's wife. And I've been here for 36 years. And I was targeted by Jillian Carey for having under-assessed property. While you had a hit list that you identified last week, or at the last meeting, you said that you didn't identify this, that they weren't targeted. And at the end of the meeting, you changed your tune, and yes, we had been targeted. And you added that you had documentation, and I'd really like to see that documentation. If I had gotten some type of leg up, I am the first person who would like to know what that was. As with Ben, what stands out to me is the people that were so quiet. Kathy Knowles, you were particularly quiet. And I thought to myself, that's kind of a, I think you're kind of a smart gal. I think you can be, but it's kind of a slippery slope, you know, defending something that's wrong. We've got problems here in Sciouacá Township, and it might be here, some of these people, they think it's because of my husband, who does have an opinion, as everybody else does. But he has been out of office for three and a half years. I will say that while he was in office, the people that he served with on the board, as well as himself, no one was ever charged with, no one was ever accused of a felony, and nobody ever filed a lawsuit against the township, of which really is the people of township, right? Jessica, you've been on the board for about six years, and you were unhappy with something in the township, and you filed a lawsuit, and that's your right. My understanding, maybe it's a rumor, is that you raised in the neighborhood of about $50,000. Your case was thrown out, you appealed, it was thrown out again, and maybe you, I believe you might have appealed it twice. Unfortunately for the township, we can't have a party to raise funds to cover legal costs. No, that comes out of the pockets of the people of Sciouacá Township. And my understanding, again, it could be a rumor, that you have some pretty generous people, including Steve Gillis, who donated in the neighborhood, is it a rumor or a fact? $15,000 to your cause. And he's married to an employee of the township, Mary Gillis. And he lives next to Catholic. And he lives next to Kathleen Brant, who's flyer, she paid for, along with David Reed. I've been targeted for my property taxes because my husband worked in the office with the assessor. Someone donates $15,000 when their wife is an employee here, pays for flyers, the people that are aligned. You know, what kind of, what does that buy you? But I'm guessing his name. I didn't see his name on the hit list, so I'm thinking he might have a leg up that I've got. The political flyer that Steve sent out was actually quite nice, but one thing it neglected was the disclosures that were required, or it's just a rule. What was also missing was that David Reed, a former trustee, chaired the committee for the fire millage, which was voted down two to one. Somehow, that seems to be forgotten. It also failed to mention that Kathleen had filed a lawsuit against the township, not once but twice, and those two were thrown out. And again, not a problem, other than, of course, that the citizens of SIO Township have to pay for that defense. We've got some problems here in SIO Township, and perhaps somebody should start with some term limits.
Thank you, Monica.
Hi. I'm Bob Groden. I'm on the Road Advisory Committee. So after hearing what was going on, I thought I'd show up and give you my rendition. I attend all the meetings and usually get here early. And most of the times, I'm waiting outside before even Gillian gets here. And I gotta tell you that at this meeting, Ian and Gillian were engaged in correcting computer problems that were arriving before we were trying to connect to the live meeting. And we've had computer problems, I think, just about every meeting, where Ian and Gillian get up there, and by 6:30, though, we're usually on board. So I'm here to support Gillian, and I really do forgive all these charges that Mr. Hathaway has brought against her. And I can't say that in the strongest terms, Will. I don't know what the hell you think you're doing. And just to add, those that choose to capitalize on these false allegations are not fit to run SIO Township. And I know there's a couple on this board right now that were part of that flyer. You are not fit to run SIO Township if you're choosing to capitalize on these false allegations. And you know who you are. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to stand up because I might be short and old, but I want to speak loud enough for everyone to hear. So thank you so much. Renee Warren Klubek, 4984 Hobbiton Lane. I expected to be quiet this evening, but I need to say something. I have been a resident here for almost 15 years. Prior to that, I was 30 years in Dexter Township. So I've been involved in township communities for a long time. My husband is a former retired Army Colonel Ranger, last assignment at the Pentagon. He has been a 30-year resident. He's unable to be here tonight. What I want to share is, early in the year of 2024, and I think it's time to say this, he was approached by a former supervisor, I don't think I need to say what that name was. We probably all know. He was approached to run for this board. We had never been involved in the politics of the township, and that came to us. We knew very little about how things were run here, what was going on. But I will tell you that there were names in that approach that were indeed targeted, things told to us, and as responsible people in this township, we said, we need to understand better what we're looking at, what he was looking at, as a former soldier in the United States Army. We came to our first meeting, and we came to the first meeting that was talking about the software. I worked 20 years in a medical practice. Thank you to the person who talked about the program we're talking about. Thank you to Ian for explaining. I understood exactly what would happen with an Outlook presentation and password. What I have done coming here, and I want to thank, is I have taken the time, instead of just using judgment, I have gone to individuals and asked them to speak with me and talk with me. I am trying to get facts. Everything always has a chance to go right or wrong, no matter what you're doing. A business, a property, we have property, we care. I don't want to see this in our hometown. But what I will tell you is, what's going on is horrible right now. And please take the time to speak to people, get facts, know what you're talking about, know who you're listening to. And guess what? My husband said he had never been with the Joint Chiefs of Staff at the Pentagon and seeing what's going on here. Worse here than Washington DC. Wow. We gotta find a way to get together, and we gotta find a way to support everyone. I'm not asking why the only software program we heard about to protect us virus-wise is involved and attached to one of the trustees. He stepped out. I appreciate that, but that seems a little questionable. This all goes on. I support the two women that I have spoken to and got clarity. I support them, and I wanted to go on record, and I continue to ask everyone, please, get your facts right. Thank you again, and thanks for everybody listening to a short old lady.
Leanne Cano, SIO Township resident. I've been following the computer incident closely since it happened. I have two Delhi neighbors who serve on the Road Advisory Committee, and it's a committee that's really near and dear to me because of the SAD debacle in Railroad and how we had to overcome together preserving our rural roads. So this is really important to me. And there's just so much confusion about what happened, and it's so simple, and everyone has just made the accounts that on November 15th, at that meeting, Gillian came to lead it. She tried to start Zoom. Hathaway had a security breach because he had not removed, he had not deleted his account. We all understand that, and thank God that Ian is highly tech and was here and present. Because I have to say that this could have been really dangerous with Hathaway, with the information that was compromised. No one needed a password to get into your email. No one needed your email account. No one needed authentication. And thank goodness that someone acted, that two people were trying to do the right thing to save your mistake. So I want to ask the residents, what would a reasonable person do in this situation? They would get an email from a community member acting in good faith. They would call them, they would reach out to their colleague, and they would say, what happened? What did I do? It sounds like you were in a bad position. Let's understand. I'm sorry, and let's make it better. So this is really where the narrative starts, because instead of that, nobody's talking. Fix SIO isn't talking about this. So what the supervisor did instead of have the reasonable discussion that we would all have in the workplace, is somehow the decision was made after following, finding out about your breach, you called the sheriff's office. What would happen in the workplace if the Michigan Medicine Person, what would happen to that person who acted in that manner? You are supposed to be a leader in our community. It's egregious the way that you handled that, and it is egregious the way this is being portrayed. And I have to say, because your response was so unusual and it was so extreme, this is where really the crux is, because it has left all of us trying to figure out what the motivation could possibly be, because this is not a normal response.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? It looks like somebody's trying to get up here to speak.
Kim Boyd, a SIO resident, SIO Community Newsletter, Manager Parker. I know your tenure ends in September, but I want to thank you for all you've done, tried to do for SIO Township. I appreciate you. The definition defines government watchdog as a person or organization who makes sure that companies, governments, et cetera, are not doing anything illegal or wrong. The League of Women Voters even has a page on how to be a government watchdog. Included, it includes attending meetings, of which I have attended over 450 meetings in the last five years. Due to the actions of the supervisor and others of the 2020 board, I now identify as a SIO government watchdog. For example, if someone on this board, let's say the supervisor, leaves his township email open on a public computer and then blames a fellow trustee for sent emails after stumbling into his account, I will call out his behavior as potentially putting SIO Township government at risk. For those board members who are not concerned with his actions, shame on you. The fact that this trustee has been charged eight months after the fact, so close to an election, smacks of election interference. To the residents and the board members who feel wronged by trustee Carey's assessment records investigation, did any of you call trustee Carey to understand why she was asking questions? Was it trustee Brizot who asked, why didn't she follow procedure? Did you ever discover trustee Brizot, what that procedure she didn't follow was? The problem with some on this board is you jump to conclusions without investigating. You are surface skimmers. Maybe you need a procedure first. Only one resident on that assessment list, fellow watchdog Rob Pattinson, bothered to investigate. And to those assess, who assessed, and to those assessment residents, say that three times fast, here or on Zoom, saying we watchdogs are being mean or ugly at board meetings, please attend more meetings and do more investigation. Assessment records are public information, and recent information can be found online. If you didn't know that, shame on you. Supervisor Hathaway, do you remember when Administrator Rowley resigned? He gave this board a list of SIO issues that should be addressed. At no time is this board, as a collective unit, discuss those issues. Along with Administrator Rowley, in just over two years, we've had additional interim administrator and interim manager and Manager Parker at significant cost. I see in the board packet, you've already contacted Amy Sell to start the process of hiring an interim manager. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. When is this board going to discuss the hard questions as to why SIO can't keep this level of employee? What salary do you think a potential interim's candidate would demand to work in SIO? I support Gillian Carey.
Hello, Erin Cohen. I will be one of the shortest comments of the night. Actually, a quick thank you to Manager Joyce Parker. It's a shame to lose another township manager, likely due to the dysfunction that we actually see tonight. Many people in this township feel we deserve a board that's worried more about its citizens' well-being, our pocketbooks, and our trails, pathways, green spaces, and not personal vendettas. Thank you, Joyce.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Jackson. I was not planning on speaking, but to learn that Ms. Parker is leaving, I do want to offer my thank you for stepping in and helping out in SIO Township. And we're going to miss your expertise, and that's all I have to say.
Anyone else present who'd like to speak?
Natalia Ivanoff, SIO Township resident. So I'm a resident of the Trailwoods community that is still under construction. I want to bring attention to two things that broadly kind of fall into the topic of oversight that the township has over our developer of Trailwoods. First, on the topic that's on the agenda, item K3, the realignment of stabler. We'll go into the fact that it's being realigned, but what is happening, what is the facts are, as we're losing a large portion of our open space through this action. And I'm asking your help to hold the developer accountable. When we purchased our home, we were very well aware of the eventual paving, but not the realignments. And when we saw plot plans and everything like that, we never saw the road cutting into our open space. And this, what this means is a loss of already limited open space that our community uses as kids' play area, place to walk our dogs, and just an overall enjoyment for our community, and I think communities kind of around in the area. I think it's only fair that this loss of open space is replaced within the community. So I urge you to put some pressure on the developer to, kind of, what's fair? Is, we weren't aware of this. It's been taken away. Well, how can we get this open space back for us and our kids and our community to enjoy? On the second broader point, per the development agreement, it's my understanding, get novice at this, but it's, the township's purview to enforce common nature open areas in a community. What I'm asking and what I'm seeing, kind of being around the community and being a resident there in SIO for a while, but also in this community for over three years, a lot of unfinished and frankly subpar work in our common areas. So once the developer leaves, we're going to be holding the bag. And my ask is this, is it possible for this board, or I know that there's another election, the next board in a few months, can you please implement a more stringent inspection and verification process that includes reviewing ongoing financial responsibilities for these developments? This would ensure that the development are held accountable for covering the costs they are responsible for and not SIO Township homeowners. I think this applies very much to our community, but also current and future developments. Thank you so much for your time.
There's no one else present in the hall who would like to speak, then we'll turn to those who are participating remotely.
Please raise your Zoom hand if you'd like to speak. We're going to start with Dave, followed by Melanie.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I can't be there in person. I'm overseas for work. I also want to comment on the same topic that was just brought up by Vitali. We, I also live in Trailwoods. I've been in SIO Township for going on four years. Rather discouraged to hear the information today, but I'm going to switch topics like Vitali did. Our developer in the Trailwoods community has been in there for way too long. He's been in there through two builders, through a pandemic. He's frustrated. He wants to go. That is evident. With that, we all know, one of the final pieces of the Trailwoods community is the stabler realignment. And as was mentioned, the stabler realignment was not mentioned in the master deed. And this is because of the jogging of the road over Honey Creek. The initial plan of paving stabler had Honey Creek going straight and Meeting Park, as it currently does over the bridge, but now it needs to jog into our community. So planning wasn't exactly ideal in the beginning. So we're losing approximately 0.5 acres plus some infrastructure, like a berm. So what I would ask, as well as Vitali did, is for the board to hold our builder, our developer responsible. Hold his feet to the fire. He has made promises, and he should keep those promises. We have lost communal space, and there's really nowhere for my kids to walk from Trailwoods to a park. We have to go across a somewhat busy wide stabler to go to the tiny little park in the neighborhood across the street. There's no reason with the size of Trailwoods and the amount of money in that community that we can't have a safe, flat place base for our children. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Melanie, followed by C E M. Melanie?
I'm mute. Hi. No, first off, Melanie Johnson. I lived in SIO Township for 10 years. My parents still live there. And they were very over-assessed. So my first point of contention is that they had their property reassessed as well. So your parents' previous property, maybe you have a step-up in cost basis? That's literally tax law. That's not, that's not persecution. That's called paying attention to where your tax laws go. And if you're going to remaster the plan every 10 years, as a master plan should be, then yeah, they're going to reassess your property values as you carry it, that you didn't actually declare you inherited it, but you have. Number one, number Number one. Number two. Come on. Everyone I spoke to, Will Hathaway, was not necessarily in support of you, but they liked your dad. And so they don't want to, they didn't want to not sign because they liked your father. You are not your father. So be, have fun. You can persecute Kelly, sorry, Gillian, Carrie, but fish. It doesn't work. It doesn't work. We can see you. You're pulling these mid-election things as a joke? And good night.
Next up is E E M, followed by Diane Benson. E E M?
Hi, my name is Cheryl McGuire and I am the recording secretary for your township and I'm on your agenda tonight, actually. I wanted to introduce myself to everyone for some time, though not necessarily under the circumstances. But I've been doing minutes on and off since about 2000. And during some of that time, a good many years, actually, I was also a code and zoning inspector for the city where I worked full-time. I had many opportunities to testify in court regarding our enforcement actions. I often was staff at zoning board of appeals meetings, some of them extremely contentious. I like to think I understand what is important in terms of record-keeping and what is not. I work for six municipalities, the city of Romulus, the city of Northville, Northville Township, Ann Arbor Township, the city of Farmington Hills, and of course SIO. I've recently turned down a couple of other offers because I'm busy enough. In the current instance tonight, the clerk included me in a request to amend the minutes of the last meeting, which you will be discussing during your minutes approval. And I wanted everyone to know it was my decision to end the minutes where I did. In my experience doing minutes, when a meeting goes off the rails and especially very late at night when everyone is exhausted, I don't include that discussion. So I was just following my longstanding policy when I ended the meeting after the clerk's first comment, following the last public comment of the meeting. In my opinion, the permanent record should, when possible, reflect everyone's best self and preserve the dignity of all. That final discussion didn't quite do that. To give context, recently I did a meeting for another of my clients when suddenly bitter accusations were being thrown out. People's voices were raised and there was just a lot of anger. None of that got included in the permanent record of that meeting. On the other hand, it's not unusual for someone to ask to add a verbatim portion. It's not common, occurs maybe once a year among all my clients, but it happens. Maybe they think I didn't quite get what they said right, or I got a fact wrong, or my summary wasn't quite clear. So they ask for a verbatim of a small portion, maybe two to three paragraphs, to make sure the record is clear. And so it's added. If you do decide to amend the minutes tonight to add that, to add a portion of verbatim transcript, you can direct me to do that. It's included in my fee. So in the end, the minutes belong to the body holding the meeting. They are not my minutes. They are your minutes. It's not my record. It is your record. So whatever you decide tonight is your decision. I just wanted to let you know why I made the decision I did and also to make it clear it was my decision and no one else's. And that's all I have. I thank you for allowing me to introduce myself and for taking my comment. And good night.
Thank you, Cheryl. Next up is Diane Benson. Diane?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Diane Benson, 24-year resident of SIO Township. I too had not planned on speaking tonight, but after listening to several residents, I just had to comment. I am so very sad with how things are going in the township and have continued since I was a part of working in the township in 2021 in the summer. And dismayed that we cannot keep a township manager. Thank you, manager Parker, for serving. I have looked at all the websites of candidates running for the elected positions in SIO. When I decide who to vote for, I look at what current elected officials have done for us and for those new to running, what they propose to do and what experience they bring. I was so, so very disappointed in reading the fix SIO website. The bashing of individuals is absolutely appalling. Where has civility gone? Jessica is a dedicated public servant and has worked hard for every resident to make sure the elections run smoothly, fairly, and we are safe when voting, which is so important, especially this year. Gillian and Kathy have worked tirelessly, tirelessly on issues with the fire department, fixing roads, listening to constituents, and dedicating hours to the Gelman mess. David has previously served as trustee and brings his past experience. And I had the good fortune to serve on the compensation commission with Kathleen Brandt, where we actually developed metrics to set salaries. How unique was that? And Ryan, who is already learning from Donna Palmer, will be a great asset as our treasurer. I will be voting for Jessica, Gillian, Kathy, Kathleen, David, and Ryan. Thank you.
Any other interested members of the public? I see none. Oh, I'm sorry. There may be one more. I apologize. There, there are three more. Next up, Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Ryan Yeagle. Jonathan? Hey, Jonathan, you're up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Okay, just got you. If it's already started, start it over, like you did for the other dude. Hello, wonderful people. I know I'm normally pretty calm and have a reputation for being soft-spoken, but I do have a few things to say to them. First, notice that tonight, it's interesting that the few hacks attacking Gillian with the indignation of a hungry three-year-old are all older white men with property interests in SIO. These are the guys who've been making the deals, the people who set your tax rates, and a group of people who really don't want folks like Gillian and others looking at what they've been doing here for the last 20, 30 years. But the residents who showed up here clearly know, the majority knows what's going on. When we asked for transparency, we didn't mean to be this obvious, Will, about your actions. Now, be clear, everyone, this is Will versus Gillian, not SIO against Gillian. Will filed this personally against Gillian. I've been calling it a nothing burger with stupid cheese since day one. The nothing burger is Will's charge. The stupid cheese is, well, that's Will's charge. But he wouldn't know if someone hacked into his account anyways, because he forwards all his mail to his personal computer because he thinks it protects him from FOIAs. But he didn't realize that you can FOIA from the server. And Monica, stand-up citizen of Monica. Why did you tell someone a couple of weeks ago at the meeting that one of the trustees sitting in that room right now was sleeping around with other people? Is that the kind of values you have? You act all proper in public, but you start whisper campaigns about others. That tells me all I need to know about your plans.
Jonathan, please direct your comments to the board.
Okay, board, I want to let you know that you can support Gillian at GoFundMe and the community. You can support Gillian at GoFundMe. Go to GoFundMe and find Support Gillian, Carrie's Fight for Justice. Dear supporters, we urgently support, ask for your support for Gillian Carey. I'm not gonna go into all the detail that people covered so well tonight. But she has been persecuted now. She appeared before a judge and a public defender. She's been fingerprinted. All of this to take away her ability to campaign during this election period. All of this time, this happened last November. All of this timed exactly for this behavior. So when you see those fixed SIO, hey, man, they broke it. Those are the same people who broke SIO. And now they're saying they want to sell you on fixing it? No, they want to install another Jack Knowles drone to do what he wants and run around the background and play these games and make SIO look like a, just like other, other people said earlier, a silly, silly place. A place where people would look and say, I don't want to live there. We need residents representing residents. Vote for Gillian, vote for Jessica, vote for Kathy and Kathleen, vote for David, vote for Ryan. We have to vote for Ryan because he's running on a post. We're very lucky to have him. Please do not vote for John Reiser, Mark Brizot, or any of the other people who are involved in this travesty. And everyone in this room should be concerned when somebody as innocent as Gillian can be singled out all the way to the prosecutor.
My name is Ryan Yeagle, 1007 East Summerfield Glen Circle. I am the sole candidate for trustee, or sorry, for treasurer, rather, in SIO Township. Sorry, sorry, there, there's many candidates for trustee. I'm not one of them. I have the sole candidate for treasurer. I look forward to serving as your treasurer here in November. There's a couple, a couple of things. I wasn't originally planning to speak tonight, but there's a couple of things I'd like to say. Ultimately, I want people to treat each other with civility. I, I think everyone is tired of attacks and otherwise angry and disruptive behavior. I, I want everyone to treat each other with respect. I, I look forward to serving all of the residents of SIO Township with respect and civility. Ultimately, what Diane Benson said and, and our recording secretary said, I, I really want some people to treat each other fairly and honestly as we work forward to have a better community. You know, there, there's been a lot that's happened over the, the last several years and even further back. But no matter what, we need to treat each other better. It, that, that's what it comes down to, folks. And I look forward to being part of that solution for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. Wendy, come on, Wendy?
Hi, Wendy Klein over on John Holmes Road. Our family has been living here for over 60 years. I don't usually get involved in politics, but I can't stay silent any longer. This is craziness. Webster's definition of gaslighting is an act or practice of grossly misleading someone using, especially for one's own advantage. This whole computer gate is a perfect example of gaslighting. And supervisor left his email open. It was discovered. Gillian and Ian worked to take care of it. Instead of thanking her like a mature adult and moving on, he chose to escalate to ridiculous levels. This is repulsive and completely unacceptable behavior. Anyone on the board that supports this type of action should immediately resign because you can't be trusted either. If you're currently running and listening to this, you should drop out. We don't need any more of this stupidity, corruption, or waste of taxpayer money. We really need somebody that cares. Gillian and Jessica have shown they do and they work for the best interests of the residents. And I know that makes a lot of some of the old guard unhappy, that SIO residents deserve better. Thank you.
Over there, we've got 55 people joining by Zoom. No other publicists, Will?
Okay, let's move on. That brings us to approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes this evening.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear.
Just asked if you wanted us to stay.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, let's proceed. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. This is the minutes, the draft minutes for the meeting of June 11th. And I had offered a correction to the end of the minutes because I felt they ended abruptly and omitted what I thought was an important exchange at the end of the meeting. And so I prepared and circulated to the board a transcript of that because I thought that was probably better than trying to paraphrase people's comments. So that I've shared with the members of the board and I would propose to add that at the end of public comment on the final page, page 19 of the minutes.
So I have a, a comment on that and why Cheryl spoke. And I want to thank Cheryl McGuire. She's one of the finest recording secretaries we have. Her minutes stand up in court and she, as she explained purposefully, left that exchange out because she did not think that it represented our best selves, certainly. If the board wants to have votes to add a portion of transcript, that wouldn't be without precedent. We can do that, but I would just say if we want to add the transcript, I would have Cheryl prepare it. This transcript here is close, but not exactly the transcript. And so I would not accept what's presented here as a transcript. If we want to add the transcript at the conclusion of the, it sounds like from the last public commenter, from my response forward through adjournment, I would suggest that we would have Cheryl include a transcription.
I think that would be, I will deliver that installed readable.
Sure, I'd support that. I certainly have respect for anyone who has to transcribe minutes after having taken a stab at it myself. So I would, I would support that. That's fine. Is there a, a motion to, to do so, or do you want to make the motion to do that?
No, I don't. I don't support this. I think it's unnecessary. I'll, I'll go along with it. But it's, it's fine. It's really, I mean, it's, it's really mostly your statement. So if, if you want to make the motion, Will, please go.
All right, I move that we have Cheryl prepare a transcript from the point where the public comments end to the adjournment. Moved by Hathaway, support by Brizot. All those in favor, say aye.
Okay.
I'm gonna talk a little bit.
You'd like to talk? Sure.
I want to hear why Jessica doesn't support it.
I'll, I'll tell you why. Is, I mean, again, it's anybody's right to bring this motion as, as Will would like to. I mean, honestly, I left it out. Cheryl left it out. I, I thought, you know, Will was extremely emotional and, and it looked bad, so I left it out. If he feels strongly, like it was something important, that's his prerogative. I will say, it seems to be kind of part of a coordinated effort here. I, I know that, I can't remember which public commenter, but another public commenter was doing a kind of Sarah Palin gotcha moment with Gillian earlier about, oh, but later at the end, then what you said was this. And, you know, so it's, you know, just sort of. Yeah, absolutely. I'm just saying, I, I don't, I don't think it's significant what was said. If, you know, Will feels strongly about it, it's his motion to make and it's all of ours to vote on.
I'll just share one last comment. First of all, these aren't even minutes to begin with. We do not produce, minutes are a page-long period in the story. Go look at the minutes that come from a board meeting from Ford, $500 billion, and it's a page or two. So to be just concise, this is every meet, we don't never have minutes, we have transcriptions. I'll agree with that. These are never minutes to begin with. So if we add something more to the 27 pages, to me it's like, what's the difference? It's so beyond what minutes should be anyways. Because minutes are typically leveraged, by my experience. We go back and say, hey, I had an idea on something. What was that main idea? Oh, yeah, it was X, Y, or Z. We don't do any of this. This is all CYA. I don't know what it's for, honestly. They're just, I think the whole thing's, I'm just being, well, you're silly and a waste of taxpayer money and, and ridiculous. But if we want to pile on some more, I guess at this point, what's the difference?
Does he know that you have a comment that you wanted to make or did you just?
I just wanted to hear her, her, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that and letting Cheryl do the.
Yeah, if Cheryl doesn't, then it's a, a neutral party.
In the interest of moving forward with the agenda, please call the roll.
The roll on the motion to amend the minutes?
To amend the minutes with Cheryl preparing the transcript.
Okay. Per rules of order, tonight we're starting with Carrie. Carrie? Okay, um, per rules of order tonight, we're starting with Carrie, Carrie?
Yeah.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Glenn Talked? No? Brizo?
Yes.
Motion passes, uh, six to one, and it's adopted.
I actually, I should have paused to see if um, anyone wanted to make any other changes to such a, okay, then we're fine, I think.
And if I could ask, I'm sorry, Melanie, um, you keep raising your hand, we're done with public comment? Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to, it's many pieces of paper here. Okay, um, that brings us to the consent agenda. So consent agenda now includes, uh, I just remind everyone G five, which we added at the beginning. So is someone prepared to move the consent agenda?
I would so move.
Moved by Riser, support by Palmer, please call the roll.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Glenn Talked? Yes, Brizo?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven go.
All right, that brings us to reports. First item is the assessor's report. I believe our assessor is here.
I think those who have stayed, staying, thank you. Not leaving. All right. Hello. Hello.
Welcome.
What comments or questions does anybody have?
So you, um, I.
Because I wasn't going to read it, I thought it was just a report.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, so people had questions.
We have a written report from the assessor, which is included in the meeting packet. And um, this is an opportunity for people to um, ask questions, seek clarification. Is there anything that you wanted to add to your?
No, just, just that my usual report, I think is scheduled for August with the PowerPoint. That'll be, you know, like year in review. This is just in reply to the discussion at the last board meeting.
This is sort of a special report in response to your questions from the board at our last meetings.
Any questions on the content of my?
Thank you. Um, so the, I just want to clarify, and I, I think I misstated at the last meeting of the audit every ten years. It's in fact every five.
Every five years, twenty fourteen, twenty nineteen, and then twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and the status of twenty twenty-four?
Oh, it's done. I can give you a, a formal presentation, but I think I covered what it said in the audit there. I mean, I think I talked to you in the office, and one of the items and one of the silly things they look for is that when someone signs a form, is it dated properly? That was one item. One item was the poverty assumptions, which the board acted on. Another item is the agricultural land values and agricultural ECF or economic condition factor. Those weren't done according to their standards, state. The land values for twenty-five for ag property, it's done already. So it's just a matter of catching up to have it go into effect next year because I can't go back and change what was in twenty-four. And I believe that is it. Let me hold on to here somewhere. But yeah, I mean, in the overall scheme of things, it wasn't a bad audit, in my opinion. I think I gave Joyce and Will what my opinion of the audit was, and I, I won't repeat what that word is. Because I'll get yelled at by Donna. She knows I like that word. Um, yeah. Yeah, those are the actual items. So I mean, how specific do you want me to get? With the odds right here. And I'm writing up my uh, action plan to how it'll be corrected, and that'll be submitted probably next week. Um, yeah. Do you want to, want to, want to, I can, I can get a copy to all the board members. I know I sent one to Jill.
Yeah.
Will and to Joyce.
Yeah, just, I want to try and settle all this noise as much as we can.
Okay.
So uh, just get some of this stuff put to bed, possible. So you've been assessed for a long time, right?
Well, twenty-six and a half, yeah, yeah, twenty-six and a half years or so, yeah.
So first off, I'm assuming nobody, you, you, you've included everything in your report, nobody's asked you to exclude it in the report, that is your complete.
They did have something that was asked to be excluded in reference to the email, my reply to what the email was. That was asked to be read.
What, what, okay, what was that exactly?
Um, just what my version of events or my feelings were on it.
What, what were your feelings?
Um, if you want me to read it, or I?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I want to hear everything. You're here.
Here it is.
Okay, yes, yes.
Yeah, I wanted to address the email that precipitated all this discussion. When Becky and Sarah received this email, the content confused and concerned them. They cannot understand why they received the email and exactly what data was requested. So, so they sent it to me, their boss. My first thought was, well, when I read the email, was equally confused. My first thought was that the parcels are all over the place and not in one particular area of township. In an assessor's experience, if you're looking to see if a property is over or under assessed, you need to look at the whole neighborhood for inconsistencies, not cherry pick certain parcels. Pull the info for the whole subdivision, the private road, or the condo development. After I discovered who owned these parcels, I became uncomfortable. And according to statute, that certain individuals are so steadfast in following, I went to the chief assessor or the township supervisor and the township manager. I gave an opportunity to the author of the email to file the freedom of information request or to look at the information from a public computer in our building. The information online only gives you four years' worth of data, and from what I understood, ten years' worth of data was requested. My offer was not taken. Also, and I say this respectfully to the board, in the future, please don't throw any of us assessors under the bus in a public forum. If you have any issues with us, our policies, or the procedures that we follow, please come and talk to me. Do not sell our reputations for the sake of politics. We're professionals, we have a card for our license, and we value that. Okay, so that's, that's basically.
That's a question, because I just, I mean, you brought, she brought up two good points, I just had to ask these questions. She brought two good points, and I, I pulled it from my, because I want to do it verbatim. I want to make sure I got things right. You guys all know I like, I like the data, I like the accuracy. Uh, quote, but we all know for the last two years, every time you go in there, they're like, oh, we got a lot of catching up to do. There are things that are out of date, a lot of things that are missing, a lot of things that are wrong, and so people get, do, get some changes, end quote. And she all knows that the AMAR, which you guys noted earlier, was uh, very critical township assessing records. I mean, are those?
When the first AMAR came out in twenty fourteen, the state, the history of the AMAR is an assessor in northern Michigan would not give a property record card to someone who asked for it. The person that he refused to give a property record card to, which could be like one page front and back, was actually a state rep. So that state rep enacted a law, our PA six sixty of twenty eighteen, that property assessing reform. But when the state decided to do audits in twenty fourteen, my feeling is, they didn't, they knew, they didn't quite know what specifically they wanted to see. So after they went through their first round of audits, they said, okay, we really need to focus on this or on this. So they developed this PA six sixty, and it kind of sets forth how they're going to do um, audits. You know, what criteria they're going to look for, what methods they're going to have to follow up on them, and so forth. So in twenty nineteen, Sial Township had another audit done. There were two items of note. And those items on there were basically like a record-keeping type situation thing. And then our audit came around again for twenty twenty-four, it was Washtenaw County's turn this year. And they found the four items, which also come down to a record-keeping or I don't, I don't, it didn't affect the, the taxable value of the properties.
So, so one of the things she said is, you guys have a lot of catching up to do, is that right? Is that?
Well, but you have to understand, when you have an assessor going to a new office, yes, we are all, we all, all have to follow the same rules. But you'll look at something and say, yeah, that looks good, that's good. And it's fine, it passes muster with the residents, it passes muster with the county, it passes muster with the state. And you got someone new coming in, like with any job, and go, oh, I don't like how they keep their records, or, oh, they didn't do that. You know, you just clean it up to what standards or what method you want to workflow, the way you want to do that. And Becky did come from a different environment, you know, so, and she also has a rebuttal. She, she can't be here tonight, and she asked me to read something.
Um, can I just ask about some of the, yeah, I think you're, were you quoting me?
Yeah, yeah, you said, you said they had a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I want to talk, yeah, I want to talk more, because my understanding when Orsha came in, and then you came in, and we had Becky, a lot of new faces. And like, and this is not a criticism, like any area of the operation, you know, where you get new leadership, you're going to have new eyes to do things new ways. So I mean, in terms of the additional, I'm just trying to get some clarity on like what that work is. So um, visits to properties, is that something that's changed? Can you talk about that? And can you talk about um, land values and how that kind of changed?
Well, okay, the land values. What happened was standards back then may have been different, or requirements may have been different than what they are today. It's ever evolving, as you all know, Lansing, hands down, edicts you got to follow as they come along. And I'm the type of person, I like paper. I want proof that this adjustment, so to speak, can be done. So we were looking at this, we, it's Becky and I, we're the only two at the time, are looking at this and going, okay, um, all these adjustments were all over there. They, they were warranted at the time they were given. I'm sure they were, because I'm, I'm discovering that now, because right now, I'm going through the files to look. And it's like, you got all this stuff, it's like, start from ground zero. So I started from ground zero, because the audit, what they are requiring you to do is to have a reason. A reason for that um, adjustment percentage that you put on there. There may have been a one-word reason, there may have been no reason. So I'm like, what do I do? Okay, this is what I'm going to do. I made that decision.
Just improving the record.
I'm just, yeah, so when the next guy or girl comes along, hey, look at, here's our conservation easements, or hey, here's all our wet swampy properties. So it's there, you know, and then what they do with it, that's, that's up to them.
All right, I, I'll, I'll hand it over to you, I'll be my last. I'm of the opinion, I think the easiest way to just get this done, and I don't want to keep reacting, we have a lot of other Sial residents to take care of, my part's opinion. You got a list of twenty-eight folks. Okay, I'm sure you, and I'm sure you have a lot, I know you're, you're very for the citizens, I know that, I know you're very citizen-centered. So maybe just, just explain every, it's anyone to do it right this minute, but explain everyone, you probably have a reason why you chose those ones. Just walk through the list of why you chose those ones, and I'm sure you got a good explanation, and we're good. I'm just, you know, walking through, reconcile with the folks, they probably deserve an answer, right? And then I think we can settle it at that point. I'm sure you had a reason. And just walk them through the logic, and we'd be good. I mean, I think that's a reasonable. I think it's a simple listen, because I don't want to keep bringing this up, oh, no, no, we got other stuff to do.
That's all you're getting from Mark. And I just would like to point out what trustee Brizo was saying. It could be, I was uncomfortable with it. It could be, let's say, the other side of the, the table. If one of them would have came to me with a list of,
Yeah.
I still would have went, wait a minute, this doesn't, I'm not, I'm not cool with this, I'm not comfortable with this. It still would work the same way. Okay, because being here for twenty-six years, I kind of know all these names. Okay, so even if, let's say, whoever the other side, whoever you want to call versus decide, you know, the others, I still would have reacted the same way. Right. So that's my opinion on it. You know, it's, it is public information, yes. However, when you come with twenty-eight, with a request for twenty-eight parcels, do a FOIA or come on in and look on a public computer. You know, it's, it's right there. You know, and. May I read this letter from Becky? She, she wanted me to say this, or that, so I'm, I'm going to do this on her behalf. "To the Sial Board, I feel an overwhelming need to set the record straight about what transpired between Jillian and myself. I thought that this was an informal conversation. I passed Jillian in the hallway, and she said, how was everything going? I was a bit stressed out, and it probably showed. I told her I was running reports on our data, and I was finding that many state tax commission changes were not made in our database. The STC, or State Tax Commission, has mandatory KMA data standards, computer-assisted mass appraisal standards, that needed to be applied in our BSNA program. I told her this was a big task to get done and still be able to complete all our other duties. I believe that's when I said that I am finding a lot of sales that are under assessed because the sales were not being visited and updated. Jillian then said, do you mind if I send you a list of parcels to check information on? I said, no problem. I never went to Will Hathaway, so I guess I am not sure how Rob Pattinson can make his assumptions. There are absolutely no facts to back his ideas. I never mentioned anyone's name to Jillian regarding this matter. Next thing I know, Jillian emailed Sarah and myself a list of parcels. This list consisted of parcel numbers only, no names. As I started to look, Lawrence Murty's name was on, was third down on the list. I did not recognize any other names, as I hadn't been here long enough to know any of these people. I then went in and showed Andrea the request. She told Sarah and myself to forward the email to her. These changes that were made only affected the assessed value, not the taxable value. Let me reiterate again, I did not go to Jillian with any concerns. My concern was to make sure that the information was entered correctly, and all the property values are equitable and uniform across the township. There is no conspiracy, there is no corruption, there is no room for politics in the assessing office. Again, I believe my conversation was between Jillian and myself, was purely small talk about what I was working on. I was blowing off steam to a fellow employee, not accusing anyone of wrongdoing, as there was none. I am here to serve the residents, to assure that everyone is treated the same. Thank you, Becky. And I have copies of anybody's. So that's.
Andrea, I'm um, looking at these questions that we received from Mr. Griffith. I think you've addressed, in, in a way, you've addressed many of them, but I just want to clarify one thing that he's asking, and that is whether you've ever, in your years here, had a request like this before?
No.
From anyone?
No. I've never had one.
Evening, you're on irrelevant.
Are there, are there any other questions?
I had a couple of comments. So I spoke to Andrea privately, and Jillian, and a resident who's here tonight. In my conversations with Andrea, um, she talked about how the assessing staff had been overworked, and you were catching up, and that, that's fine, I understand. You talked about various checks and balances that are in place right now to look at assessed values and at the county level and at the state level. And you didn't believe that anything unusual or you know, anything irregular had gone up. So I was satisfied with that. And I don't know, you know, Mark, I don't know where we go from here, but I was satisfied with her answer. And I think we do need to move on.
I won't move on. But I don't want the residents hurt, that's, that's what I was just trying to get across.
That's fair.
I have a question, and I'm addressing it to the people in the room, because you're the ones here right now. Do you understand your tax bill?
Yes.
Do you know what the taxable value is? Do you know how that's uh, calculated each year?
I do. I worked in finance for thirty-eight years.
Okay.
Is this person yet to speak?
Just answer my question now.
I do.
Okay, good, Jonathan. Now, your taxable value is strictly governed by proposal A. A of nineteen ninety nine. It goes up by the CPI, which we get from the state. Or maximum, that's the top ever, of five percent. And as we know, although some people will tell you differently. Cost of living. Last year and this year was much higher, but it was capped at five percent. So that changes your dollar. Dollars in your tax bill. The state SEV. We have to keep track of, again, by proposal A. To keep track of, looking at the studies and everything of the market value. To the best of our ability with the information we're given. Of your property. And I will tell you. Over the last, I'm just picking a number, it's probably too little or too few. I'm gonna say the last five years. When a person sells their house, now our records say it's worth. Three hundred and fifty thousand, it's only by the numbers we have. Most often, it goes higher. And it's very difficult and confusing for the owners and we just have to follow what we get. But. It's, that's the law. Now, when those sales, those deeds come in for us to change the records. We have to go. And I, correct me Andrea. If I'm wrong. We have to use the SEV we have on record, is that correct?
What is the question? I'm sorry.
You sell a property. And, you know, they most likely in this area get more than what our record shows as state market value.
Ninety-nine percent of the sales we see come in, people are paying a lot of money for their houses.
When we change ownership, do we use the sales number or do we use the state?
It's on tap to the SEV, not sale purchase.
Then I, I stated it correctly. In the long run, everyone's looking like, oh my gosh, but that's the basics and that's a long one to follow. So, in case of selling your property, the new owner. They kind of luck out, whatever we have on the record, following the rules. It's what their taxes will be calculated on.
When I given my presentation, I think a year ago on the assessment notice, I want my assessment to go up. That means, in my own house, I seen that that assessment go up, I said, yeah, that's nice. But I'm gonna check that taxable value calculation. Is what people, to make sure they were only charged. That amount, and if it's different, maybe they built something, a deck or a basement. So. Because you don't want your assessments to go down, because when they do, that means the economy. Has tamed, like in oh eight.
Like in oh eight, and we've done about three years, as I looked at some of these properties. It was the same. For like about three years, it didn't change. So it can skew. If you don't completely understand. It can make your thoughts think, oh my gosh.
Do we have any more questions?
You know, the last time I said I wanted it behind us, and I do want it behind us, so for the twenty eight. People on the list, it looked like some were there for a reason and some may have been cops, so. If, if you're on the list, you don't know whether, you might not know why you're on the list, but. The question I have for you is, do the owners of any of the twenty eight parcels have anything to worry about? With respect to, there's going to be an increase in their taxes?
No, not unless they vote in a millage. They build an addition or?
Based on activity by the assessment. How about, do any of the. People who own parcels, property listed on that list, have anything to worry about or be concerned about? That they're gonna be the subject of a fraud investigation? Have you ever suspected that fraud played a role in any determination of a property's value in SIO Township? Thank you Andrea. To the extent that you, that anyone suspects fraud. What should he, she, they do with respect to that suspicion, that information?
All state tax commission. But they better have a good reason to. Call me first. So maybe if I can answer their questions. I would start there.
I ain't calling you.
To me, there's. There's no allegations of fraud. I understand why some of the parcels were chosen because they were like properties, ranches to ranches, colonials to colonials. That part I understand. But then there's more involved than just. That sort of. Comparison.
Whether, if there are no further questions, thank you Andrea for. Stay for the late evening. Alright, well, the final.
Did you get, did you get Mr. Griffith's question?
Yes, I do have.
And you can respond to those privately or whatever. I'm not gonna ask those, that's his questions.
Okay. That brings us to our regular reports.
Well, we're not gonna ask, challenge the list. We've been asked about how the news got on the list.
Okay, so, regular reports, we have some written reports in the packet, we also received a, today, a. Report on the planning commission meeting last night. Are there further questions or comments on any of the written reports?
I got a copy.
We have it on copy, please.
It's in the packet, but here.
You have an extra one? I think I have one.
Never mind.
So, clerk Flintoff, you had a question or a comment?
Yes, I have one update and then one question and suggested action. Update on the election, we got ballots in a little bit early, so we're getting them out a little bit early, we've issued two thousand one hundred and four. Fifty of them overseas and military. I expect to have the rest of those requests out. By Thursday, so in the next couple of days, everybody who has requested one should get their ballot. If you have requested an absentee ballot and do not, have not received it by July fourth, give a call, but don't worry about it till then.
And Jillian said, or Jessica, is that a good number of absentees? I mean, is that a higher than normal, lower than number one? Is two thousand a good number, I guess?
So, right now in Michigan, we've got, so SIO Township's got fifteen thousand three hundred voters, about thirteen thousand five hundred active voters. We have nearly seven thousand people on our permanent absentee voter list. In Michigan, we're about, ki- kind of going through a transition between. Being on a permanent list where you have to fill out the application, so a couple thousand of residents received. An application that they need to fill out, and about five thousand others did not, because you're on the permanent ballot list. So we're slowly transitioning to people just automatically receiving ballots, instead of first an application and then a ballot.
So, just so I understand from my application. No, 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 not really, just so I understand, cuz I can ask these questions all the time and I don't have an answer.
Yeah, so always, always refer to the clerk's office, I'm happy to, you know, explain it now, but, but basically, we're gonna have. All of our requests, people on the permanent ballot list or permanent absentee voter list out by Thursday. Which was the legal date that we were supposed to start and will be finishing, so we're ahead in schedule. And of course, if anybody wants an absentee ballot, no reason, you can come into township hall with a photo ID. Or you can send a written request to us, or you can sign up online at the state's website. Okay, and then I just had a comment on the supervisor's report, I want to discuss a little bit. So I saw on the supervisor's report that he had. Reached out to Amy Sell, had entered into a contract and had proposed the committee. I found out about it when it was posted in the packet, to look for an interim manager, so. I wanna thank Joyce for her service and just express a desire that this board be functional enough to. Try to recruit an interim manager together and not with. Just doing it together, so wanted to have the conversation at the board table about it. I also wanted to note that the funds, the four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollar contract that the supervisor signed, there is no budget for it. And so would ask that if we want to go forward with it, that we make a budget amendment to support that. Certainly, the supervisor's within his right to sign any contract under five thousand dollars, so this one was fifty dollars under that five thousand limit. But there is no budget for it, and so I would ask that if this board wants to spend four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to do that search, that we just. Do the proper budget amendment here, and I have the language here.
Great, let's go ahead and do it.
And I, I would say, too, that, you know, it would be a decision to then seek an interim township manager, and the practical reality is. You know, that person might be here through November twentieth or later, but with a whole new board. I don't think any of us can anticipate, so we would be recruiting for probably a short term person.
Well. You're here till how long, Joyce?
September fifteenth.
Okay, so September fifteenth, and I agree that the new board should probably be making that decision.
So it, it could be a two month person. Right, I'm just talking about, you know, how mu- how many resources, I also want to note too, and a, a second kind of proposed action. I just want to acknowledge, since the last time we were recruiting, we have Aurora Northrup, who's here. Our human resources generalist, I want to rely on kind of the professional expertise we have in-house. And would suggest that she would work in partnership with Amy Sell. Management staff should be consulted, you know, when I see, see this list, it, it shouldn't just be a list of, of board members since. Working with the board is only a small part of the job.
The list that's on my memo. That includes Aurora's name.
Oh, sorry, okay, so Aurora, but I, I want to make sure that management staff, the people who work day in and day out, are involved.
Yeah, Donna's on the list. And Jones Parker is on the list, so I think we got that covered. If you would like to make a motion to make the budget.
Utilities director and to, to be involved in the process.
Well, I'm sure everyone will have a chance to be involved in the process, but we don't need to have everyone on a search committee, then we will never be able to schedule interviews, so. This is my proposal, I've talked with all these folks to serve on the committee, if you would like to. Make a motion to have a budget amendment so that we can, we feel, you know, confident that we'll have the funds when they're due, that's fine. This is what we are, I have shared with the board that we are embarked upon in terms of coming up with an interim. Township manager as quickly as we can.
So we really haven't discussed that as a board. I am in support of it. I think that. If Joyce leaves and we don't have new purchasing that can go in, there's gonna be quite a void and. I think the sooner we start the process, the better.
Yep, I agree.
For an interim, yeah.
For an interim, no.
We don't know where. This is going, I mean.
Just to point out, emphasize that this is a search for an interim manager, that we're not presuming to select. Long term township manager, although Amy said, you never know what's gonna turn up in the search, and we may find somebody who. Through an interim search who could turn into a long term manager, so.
What about Mark Thompson?
Uh, we had a conversation with Mark Thompson.
I, I don't think we should get into all of this.
It's a great interim.
He's, he's currently, he's currently employed by the city of Ann Arbor as an interim for the city of Ann Arbor.
Yeah, and I just want to say again, I mean. I, I really defer to Amy Sell, Aurora Northrup, the professionals in this area. Instead of, you know.
Well, wait, if he's interested.
He wants to wait. And see the outcome of the election. I would say a maybe is a fair. Characterization, the three of us went out with that.
Kathy Noel took the initiative and got him up here and. Go.
Alright, let's stay focused.
I have a report to you about.
Alright, well, we'll get to other reports, I think if we, if you wanted to make a motion for a budget amendment now, we can do it now, or we can wait till.
I want to just make sure that this contract is, is kosher. Because we haven't had the funds appropriated, so I'd like to make a motion to appropriate four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Of general fund fund balance to one oh one, two seventy eight, two three, for the purpose of contracting for a search for an interim township manager. To serve until at least November twentieth.
We have a motion by Flintoff, is there support?
What is the deadline for that, for her? If she doesn't, she just keeps looking until. We find one?
Work for a week or she work for three months?
There's a timing, there's, there's information about the search in the proposal, so it may, if you, if you look through it, you may answer some of those kinds of questions.
And this, this one though, in this proposal from her, had that the. Looks like you'd had a conversation with her about having somebody that would serve till next spring.
I think she was projecting, I think what you're referring to is Amy's projection out of how long. Search process might take to fill, fill the position permanently, and so she's, she was projecting that out there as a. Potential timeframe for an interim, if the interim wanted to. You know, fill the role, fill the vacancy until a permanent person was hired by the, whoever's in office. After November twentieth.
So I made a motion.
Yes, and is there a second?
By riser.
Okay, so moved by Flintoff, support by riser, please call the roll.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Brasso? Motion adopted, seven zero.
Okay, unless there are further questions, I understand that there are a couple of people who have reports.
I do for the first time, I have a report. We have been working diligently together with Andy, the police, not police. On the fire millage. Business case, I think is probably the best, the best term to, to, to call this document, and we are about eighty-five percent done. I'd like to say we can hand something to the folks here at the board on Monday, morning, or Sunday night, maybe, or the weekend. And get it in your hands, and it's, it's really close, we're just really finalizing the, the last little pieces, Andy's been doing a. Guy did a bang up job, I'm just saying that to be nice, I'm losing pretty critical documents. Pretty good job. Yeah, I think he got some stuff from David Reed, David Reed did a good job, it, it, it's a good, it's gonna be a solid document, solid, solid document. I hope everybody reads it, and then what you can do is kind of take pieces and parts of that and make little infographics. Little consumable things so people can kind of read it, and I think it'd be the next critical thing to go sell this, if you will, to the, to the, to the public.
That's awesome.
And maybe we even run this by the, what they call the sanity board, or whether those guys were called the. Alright, whatever the tax, whatever, well, hey, they were, get some of their buy-in, okay, they were. Opposition, I'm, I'm open here, all sides of any issue. And maybe some of that feedback, we got a little tuning, we did a little tuning, but we're, we're, we're tracking it, we got it.
And on the, the money side of it, the chief, William Moran, Joyce and I met about kind of looking at projections, what it might take, and so. Our interim finance director in chief are working on that, hoping to bring that aiming for July eleventh. So that'd be great to have the report then too, for that first July meeting.
Should have it.
I'm sorry, did I misspeak? Whatever, our first meeting in July, July ninth.
It's a very simple to consume document.
And when, when do we need, whatever we need at the, to the county for the?
August thirteenth or something.
Yeah.
The deadline for.
It's August thirteen.
Putting something on the ballot in November is, I think, August thirteenth.
Yes, and if we don't want to have a special meeting, that regular meeting then is July twenty-third, that second meeting in July. Is when we have to take action.
Because we shift things.
Yeah, and we've, when I've raised this before, I've asked people, like, do we want to schedule a special meeting for this? Yeah, and we've, as when I've raised this before, I've asked people, like, do we want to schedule a special meeting for this? Um nobody has wanted to, so think about the deadline being July twenty-third, not August thirteenth.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I've, once we all kind of get by on this, I'm we're ready, we're able to go. Create a uh like a set of infographics, we can make big posters on them, flash them along the walls, be a lot more proactive than we were last time, cause I think the reason we. Lost, or whatever, whatever term, I'm trying to be politically correct in the term that we wanna use, uh didn't get our message across strong enough, cause we didn't have those kinds of things, so. I really like that one, for example, remember the one, when the water, the sewer people came in from Ann Arbor, that's kind of a big, simple infogram. That same kind of idea, if we can do that, I think that's a way to.
Oh, for the strategic planning.
Yeah, yeah, let's see, if we can do something like that, we can get it across, I think, get it, get it, get over the finish line.
All right, all right, is that.
That's it.
I think the treasurer has a, at least a brief comment, announcement.
And everybody's gonna love it. Your tax bills will be mailed to you this coming weekend.
Oh my god.
That's starting a new year.
If people have questions about the SAV, they should call you.
Yes.
All right, um are there any other comments about reports, any further elaborations? Um township manager.
Yeah, I just wanted to um mention in reference to the uh audit that was done related to assessing. Andrea will be able to get that out to everyone and uh do a presentation with her responses, but. There wasn't anything in the report that reflected fraud or any, made any wrongdoing, so I just wanted to state that for the record.
Okay, we are ready, um that moves us to the monthly financial reports.
Uh they're included, I asked Rebecca to um trim these down a little more to just be for the most active funds, but if anybody has any questions, I can answer them.
Well, I did note, I did go through because I know there's uh some items later on. While item in particular, the Zebra pathway, and um so I went through to sort of. And with some guidance, I should say, um to look at a couple of things, so on. Page, and the pages sort of jump around a little bit because there's actually, I think, two different documents here.
Yeah, one's a balance sheet, one's a revenue and expenditure report.
Right, so uh uh in the revenue and expenditure report on page sixteen, I think, is fund two oh eight. And that's.
I got you.
I'm just trying to find it myself, here we have sixty, okay, so um I just wanted to make sure that um. I understand and that everyone understands, so that we have approximately um.
What page do you want?
It's a little difficult, it's actually um.
What's each in the um packet?
So it's, well, I don't know that if the page numbers in the packets are gonna be the same for everyone, but it's in my packet, it's a hundred and fifteen. And it's uh but it up in the upper right-hand corner, it says page sixteen of forty-one.
Yep, yep, got it.
Okay, so um. So we have a combined end balance. Uh hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents for Z. Half engineered, so that's the end balance, that's what's left at the end of.
What line are you looking at there, uh huh?
These.
Yeah, but those are un-audited, unfinalized numbers, I mean, we're still completing the audits.
Right, but but according to this report, what what it shows is we have that much balance left over, is that right? So it'd be a hundred and uh would be, okay, all right, and the year-to-date expenditures, um if you follow over on that same line. There's only um one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents, so we have. Remaining of 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 un-audited, but a hundred and thirty-eight thousand and change. Uh is the balance for engineering for Zebra Pathway. And we have a total budgeted at the bottom for uh fund two oh eight. For the current fiscal year, I believe, of one million five hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
So. Yeah, so close, but the the budgeted number here, if you look at the bottom of the total revenue, it's the. One, three, seven, one. Okay, and then the the amount in this year-to-date, this is what's spent in the first two months, this column.
Okay, and then.
And then this is the remainder.
Okay, so this is the.
Budgeted minus expenditures equal what's remaining.
Right, so this is what's remaining, budgeted for the current fiscal.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I I understood it correctly, everyone's on the same page, all right, so the other page in here. It that I think is relevant is um, this is in the balance sheet. Age um four of twenty-eight. So I believe I'm understanding this correctly, that this shows what the total cash on hand is for fund two oh eight. So up here.
Yes, the, yeah, under the balance sheet, so he's on the first page of the. Balance sheet for fund two oh eight, yeah.
Okay, so, so that's um the total of if you put these together.
The cash account.
Right, um of three million. Two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents, um if you take from that. The current budgeted year, so if if we spent everything that is budgeted for fund two oh eight. In the current fiscal year, the one million five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, the the cash on hand remaining after. If we spent all of that, would be one million four hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents.
So that sounds, I'm not checking your notes right now, that sounds approximately right, you can see that in the fund balance. So you've got the cash here.
Right.
Out of the three million minus liabilities, and then the fund balance of the one point five.
Okay. And that, just to be clear, doesn't include the M E D C money because that's not counted until, because it's. Reimbursement grant, it's not counted until we actually spend that money and and seek reimbursement, so that's not including the M E D C. Grants that we have received.
Yeah, I need to double-check that right now, so in everybody's packet under K five. Um you'll see a three-page memo from Plant Moran, which you don't need to reference it now, but I do wanna direct our attention to it. And the reason that Joyce and I asked Plant Moran to do this memo is because the. Um M E D C grants that we brought in were a little confusing. Um and I think there were some, it's a reimbursement-based grant, and I think with the the tracking of it, they needed to kind of sort out what was what. So they put in here um a breakdown for us on those three M E D C grants. And um. Noted the prior period adjustment that we'll have to be making to our F Y E twenty-four financial statement, so they'll be making those, and that will appear on our audit. So going forward, and Joyce and Will and Chris and Rebecca and I've talked about it, we're going to ask a staff person. To be responsible, hopefully Chris ongoing or or someone else be responsible for doing the grant reimbursement. Requests and then work alongside the finance side, so that, is that accurate, well?
I think so.
Chris Chang.
Yes, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, but but Will, on the actual fund balance, those projections, I would direct your attention to. The projections that Plant Moran did here, the projected fund balances, which is in twenty-four and twenty-five healthy. We would get low in twenty-six, but they project we still have enough to finish phase five.
Great. Okay, well, unless there's other questions uh about the financial reports, the month of financial reports, uh are we ready to move on? Okay, let's do so, um that brings us to our public hearing, um this is a public hearing on the Trailwoods. Um P U D amendment, this has been deemed to be a major P U D amendment, um and this evening we're. Uh holding the public hearing so the people can speak to that uh before we consider. Uh action item under new business, um if there is. Um we have, I I think we usually, we start with a presentation from the applicant, and then we turn to members of the public. Um I think we have, do we have, uh Scott, are you here to make that presentation?
I do, yeah.
Okay, so wanna, and and we wanna keep this, you know, moving along, so if you can do a concise presentation, that would be great, like uh a five-minute version.
Yep, we'll do that.
Is there anybody joining remotely for this?
Um I don't know, is do, is Dave?
Perhaps, Dave is here.
Okay, great.
Be right back.
Thank you.
Do we want graphics? If I, if we do, someone's going to have to email me a link.
Could we get um an introduction? I know you know each other by name, but.
Absolutely, and and Joyce or John, could you please give him the Zoom link? It's on the agenda, thank you.
Uh sure, it's Zoom?
Eight thirty-four.
Rebecca, I'm bringing in Laura and Matt, Manalov, Joyce has. And if you'd be so kind to just make sure your mic and speaker and camera are off.
Oops, that's what happened. Go on, there we go, there we go, all right, now.
Eight thirty-four. Four zero three six, six seven three six.
He's a problem solver.
Okay.
Are we ready? Okay, so um, yeah, if you guys would introduce yourselves and then um.
Sure, my name's David Stolman, it's nice to see you all again, I'm uh president of Biltmore Development, the developer for the project. And with me tonight, struggling with technology is uh Scott Betzel with Midwestern Consulting, our civil engineer. Um we're here tonight for the Trailwoods uh major amendment.
We usually have, you've been with us before, um you guys, so but we usually start with a developer presentation briefly. And then we turn, then we actually open the public hearing and invite members of the public to come and speak.
Okay. Uh yes, as David said, tonight, we're here for a major um administrative amendment to the previously approved P U D site plan. Um this amendment arose from the need to alter the geometry of both the existing Honey Creek. And South Stabler Road, such that Stabler Road would be relocated within the drain easement. And currently east of where the existing road lies. This amendment would result in the relocation of parts of the Honey Creek and parts of South Stabler Road. It would also include a conversion of point five six acres of existing open space to right-of-way. Um the removal of twenty-five previously planted trees in the open space, the removal of eleven native trees. And replanting of fifty-nine new trees, so there's two areas that we're going to talk about uh briefly tonight, one, how did we get. Uh to this point of needing an administrative amendment to this project, and two, what. Did we do to address the concerns that arose from the neighbors that were most um closely impacted by this this change? So, in a nutshell, how did we get there? We.
Are you sharing your screen?
I'm trying to right now, yeah.
You look good on camera.
Yeah.
Done, promoting you to the panel.
Okay, gotcha.
Seeing that?
This is part of his five minutes.
Yeah, there we go, now I got you.
Hey.
I'll tape it.
So, spooling up.
Yep, I got you.
All right. There. Okay. At the original time of approval of Honey Creek, we entered into agreements with the road commission. The road commission saw the need for the improvements to uh Stabler Road and Park Road, which were our small um. Very narrow gravel roads, not particularly highly traveled. Um my client entered into a road improvement agreement that included several different um. Projects. Initially, really slow. Initially, in, we had to do a short section of Stabler Road repaving from the Kirkway subdivision south to the entrance of uh Phase One B. We had to do a dedicated right turn lane onto Jackson Road, eastbound Jackson Road to southbound Stabler Road. Currently, we're on the third phase of the project, was, which is paving of the remainder of Stabler Road and Park Road. Across the frontage of the uh the subdivision on Park Road, and to a point that's actually past the entrances to the Arbor Point and. Country French neighborhoods, the last phase will include the replacement of the bridge, existing timber bridge, which. We actually just built in two thousand and four, I believe it was, when we did the Kirkway project, but we'll be replacing that with a box culvert. Um we are currently, as I said, working on the paving of the Stabler Road and Park Road. This is the most complicated phase of the project, it involved multiple stakeholders, it involved the Washtenaw County Road Commission. Who has their own sets of interests, it involved the Washtenaw County Water Resources Commission, which has jurisdiction over the county drain. Which has their own interest, interests, and it also involved uh Michigan Eagle. Who have yet a completely different set of interests, so all of these parties, when we got together and started working with them. Um we had to come up with compromises that everybody would approve, and it was a back-and-forth effort, this whole process. Played out over the course of several years, the Eagle permit, it alone took thirty-two months to secure. Because of the re- the relocation and new um environmental um monitoring and remediation policies. That Eagle had just adapted uh at the onset of the start of our project, and then a little thing came along called COVID two. That added like certainly, probably a six to eight months to the whole process, but. You know, it was a process where we had to, it was a give-and-take process between all three of these regulatory agencies, when we finally got down to to the brass tacks. Eagle held most of the cards because it was the one that ultimately had to permit the relocation of the drain and the enclosure of the drain with new crossings. They had two major concerns, one was limit the amount of of drain relocation to the least possible. And two, limit the amount of drain enclosure to the least possible, so we looked at many different solutions and. What ended up being the best solution was a solution that involves. The um removal of the two existing crossings, and I'll go to an aerial here. Right now, we've got two existing bridge crossings that are very narrow, both within close proximity of the uh of the intersection of Stabler. And Park Roads. Well, it doesn't want to go anywhere, does it? It's not cooperating, I know it. This is the aerial photo of what we've got here, and if you've driven out there, you you're probably well aware of this yourself. Yeah, so we got two crossings in close proximity to the intersection, it's it's bad, bad geometry from everybody's standpoint, from. From a water resources standpoint, we've got bad geometry for crossings, highly erosive conditions. From the road commission standpoint, we've got two crossings where there should just be. From the road commission's standpoint, we've got two crossings where there should just be one there. And so the obvious solution was to, to combine this into one crossing somehow or another. The problem lies in the fact that the drain that exists along here right now runs right alongside of the county road. Literally, if you pull off to the side of the road and step out, you, you'll fall into the drain on the west side of Stabler Road. And so in order to construct the new road, we would be building a much larger road than currently exists out there. Currently, the road is eighteen to twenty feet wide. And you literally step up out of the road, onto the vegetated shoulder, and, and brush, and, and bop thorn and trees begin right there. And so I'm gonna try to show you what the big problem here was. So this is our existing conditions we have out here. You can see where highlighted the road is about twenty feet wide through this area. I'm showing, I've highlighted the existing drain that runs alongside of it, the, the lines you see next to our one-foot contour interval. So literally off the side of the road, it drops down six feet to the drain. Now, twenty feet is a very narrow road, and to make to a new road that we would be producing out here would be about thirty-eight feet of pavement and then five-foot, two-foot gravel shoulders on each side. So I'll show you where the pavement, it's just the pavement alone, would lie. The red lines that you see on there, that represents the outboard edges of the pavement. Pavement consists of two twelve-foot lanes with five-foot paved gravel shoulder, ostensibly for bikers or pedestrians walking. That's the edge of the pavement. Then you've got a two-foot shoulder beyond that. And then you have, have a four-on-one runout slope zone. So the problem was that when we put a new road in this location, it just doesn't fit. What we would have to do is we'd end up having to relocate the entire county drain through that area. This is, and I can't blow this up a little bit. This is gonna be a bad graphic because I can't blow it up big enough, but this is basically what the, what the road cross-section looks like, the drain cross-section. What we're trying to, trying to point out here is that the, the drain doesn't fit where it used to go by new standards. To the point where leaving the road where it's currently located would result in the drain being located way out here, where you see the darker blue line? Be displaced a good twenty feet beyond where it is right now. So it'd have to be, the whole thing would have to be reconstructed. And this would result in about a total of nine hundred and eighty lineal feet of, of drain relocation. Eagle was not interested in that solution at all, and so they told us to keep looking. And so what we ended up doing is we ended up we ended up flip-flopping the flip-flopping the location of the drain and the location of the road.
Light blue existing.
Light blue is existing, dark blue is proposed, yep. Which ended up being able to save all of this, all of this drain, leaving it in place up here. So that, that was sent to Eagle. They, they vetted it. They said, it looks good, file your permit. And then, you know, thirty-two months later, we, we had our permit to construct. Last summer, we started the construction process, and we started to stake out there. And then it became apparent that, that a lot of the residents did not know that, that this was part of the program. Many of them knew that the road was going to be repaved, but they didn't know the details of it. And rightfully so. The, the people that lived on the end of the cul-de-sac were the, had the greatest impact. Obviously, the, the road was moving closer to them than where it was before. And so we stopped the construction process. It never began. We did some staking. And we met with the, the residents and we, we gave them several solutions to what we could do. The solution that we ended up arriving at that was the most well-received was a solution where, when we originally designed this improvement, we weren't necessarily looking for the minimum that the road had to shift to the east. We were just looking for a solution. When we looked at it really closely, we realized we didn't have to go as far to the east with the shift that we did. We could actually move it back twenty feet to the west, which lessens the impact on the residents there at the end of that cul-de-sac. And what we, what we did is we said, listen, what we'll do is we'll build a berm here in this, in this open space, and we'll heavily landscape it. And that twenty feet gave us the ability to build a much bigger berm to shelter them from the effects of, of the relocated road. And so after having several meetings with, with residents, and we had meetings with the township officials as well, but we had private ones with the residents themselves. That became apparent that that was, that was going to be the best solution, and the residents came on board with it. And we had filed a, a new permit with Eagle for this relocation. We've made it through the review process with Eagle. The public comment process ended yesterday. They anticipate issuing the permit no later than July fifteenth. And so that keeps us on schedule to construct this, this season, which is really good because if you remember me talking about the other bridge that has to be replaced to the north, we can't build that one until we get this part done, so the people have way out. And so that leaves us in a position to do that next summer. And then presumptuously, like, the rest of Park Road would get paved probably the, the year after that. So that's kind of where we're at. I know that's a lot to digest, and so we're certainly available to, to answer any questions. I have lots of other exhibits, and I can give you lots of other information if you, if you need it.
One of the questions I thought was rightfully so by one of the residents, like, what's the guarantee about the berm? What's the guarantee about the trees? What's, I mean, assume they've all bought into this. What kind of guarantees can we have in place to make sure? Not only those happen, but those happen in some kind of timely manner. So it's great you're gonna put them in. They just want you to put them in four years from now. They want to put it in at the same time.
Well, I mean, the township holds a lot of, a lot of hammers over, over the project. I mean, they can stop issuing COs, for instance, if, if we don't fulfill the terms. I'm not sure if, if.
Of a house?
Yeah.
We're gonna stop doing a C of O for a house because there's a problem with the trees down this yard?
You can.
Like this, you have that as a hammer that the township has.
There's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of influence that the township has. I was just gonna ask my client, is this, uh, is this a, this is the term, this is part of the modified development agreement, is it?
Yes, it's part of.
And so there's, there's, there's a multitude of ways that the township can affect this.
Well, I think everybody just rather than do it the hard way, let's do it the easy way.
Yeah, the, the easy way would be if we get our permit in time and if we get approved, then we will start construction on this August first. We have to be very careful about the construction schedule because we do not want to leave the road closed during the winter when we can't get any work done. So our goal is get in there August first. We're working on letting the contract. We should get all of the hard pavement, et cetera, done before it gets cold. If, depending on how the construction staging works, we can potentially get some landscaping in in the fall with it. It really becomes a question of how much, just can we actually get the landscaping in while we're doing the roads? Because we can't plant trees in December.
Right.
So, yeah, so, so once, once the road's built, if we can't do it concurrently, I mean, our plan and we'll have contracts that we're gonna immediately go and take care of all the landscaping. The berm, I think, can get built this year. I just don't know, depending on, we get a lot of rain, we get the lake, can we get the trees in, but it's all coming.
So that's fantastic. Can we just get all that in writing?
It is, it's in the APD.
We call APD, but can we get them like some kind of priority writing, like they're going to do this at the same time? Is that, you guys are more experts on this.
Okay, so in your development agreement, it states that the developer guarantees pathway maintenance, other landscaping.
Warranty, yeah.
And there's more, but that was, I had questions on, on that in particular because residents haven't asked us questions about it. But I think you've answered it here.
I, I mean, put it this way, we want to get this done because we know we gotta do the bridge next year, and every, any delays are just gonna push everything farther back. And so, I mean, we're, you know, we, 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 we were hoping to be in front of you earlier than this this year. But we ran into a scheduling problem with planning commissions. We actually had like two nights of public hearings. And it pushed us back a few weeks, and then we had to wait for the minutes and get here. But I know, we're in a rush. I already got a text message from my, you know, from my construction manager saying, hey, tell me what.
General contractor just texted me, how did it go?
So I mean, we're, we're itching to get started, to get this wrapped up, and it's a big job. It's a complicated job, so. And it's, it really is seasonal. It's not like we can get it half-done and then have the road closed, so.
When does the HOA take over?
The HOA, we set up this week. We've got the advisory road committee. We assigned three people who asked to be on the advisory road committee. We're gonna meet with them probably once in July, once in August, depending on the December availability. And then once we've got them, they understand the role of the advisory committee, how the board is, then we're gonna move to transition the board sometime in the fall.
Of twenty twenty.
Forward, this year. And so that's totally separate from this, other than this whole project is just taking up an enormous amount of time trying to get it all kind of put together and ready to go.
No, but one of the practicalities is that there really isn't a HOA till the A is on with, with, with this board. So it's individuals who, who write me, who contact me.
Right.
So, so a, and it's a little frustrating as, as a trustee to not have that, that organized body, the HOA, to communicate with, like, what are, what are your names? So, so they write to me, and then I get the feedback that, oh, those are just the outliers. So how, you know, how, how do I know who speaks for the people if there isn't a viable HOA with sufficient membership and, and that the, that can communicate the will of, of the residents, so.
The will of the residents with regard to?
This development, the, the progress of this development, issues that have come up, the change in the PUD. Now, I get that this, this thing was just a fluke that it came up. It was, it's, you know, a, an intersection of just bad things with respect to, you know, the topography, the location of the, the, the Honey Creek, the, you know, what, what the road commission had to say, they only want one bridge, not more than one bridge, and Eagle says, you can't bury creeks. You, the less, and, you know, you got the, having a creek right next to the road. So I get that this is something that nobody wanted, nobody, it was just a, a sandwich. It's a sandwich that we have to, to, to eat somehow. But the problem is, is that, to me, it moves the right-of-way to, i- i- it creates right-of-way to, to, to the, to the west, and, and, but it, it pinches some open space. And I'm not just talking about the people at the terminus of the Sanctuary Court cul-de-sac. Those people are impacted, but so are the people who don't live on Sanctuary Court, but have dogs and frisbees and, 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 and got, it's, I, I've been walking and littering people's doors with literature, so I've gotten around to various subdivisions. And that's one, that there's pathways, but there aren't, there isn't much open space. There's, there's a nice wooded area, but there's, there's some, there's some things north of, I think it's called North Trailwoods, kind of south of Menard. But there, there, there aren't, there's not a pavilion, there's not a.
There never was.
I, I, I know, I, I know, I know that there wasn't, but they're losing half an acre of open space, or it's, it's turning into a berm. So, so, so I guess.
A half an acre of open space, which if you go out there and look at it, is a creek that's probably dangerous, next to a road that is dangerous.
You're gonna have to, aren't you gonna have to regrade and create a burden? You're gonna have to tear up things that are pre-existing.
Yeah, you're ripping, we're ripping out, as Scott said, twenty-five trees that we already paid for and planted.
I, 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 it's not our. Listen, that's part of the sandwich. I get it, I get it. It's, and it's, I'm not saying that you're not at the dining table with us or the, with the residents, but, um, and I know that right across the street, that to the west, i- is township partial that we own, V simple, I'm told, not a conservation easement. So maybe there's something creative that the township can do with respect to parks that are adjacent or nearby. And one of the things I'm gonna get to after the public hearing, I, I think this isn't even the deliberation phase, am I right?
Right.
So I might.
This is their presentation.
This is, this is their presentation, and the questions are sort of spilling over.
Those are questions that I'll be getting to when it's appropriate to ask my questions.
So if, if, if there aren't sort of more clarifying questions, I would, I would like to open up the public hearing so we can hear from the members of the public. And then all members of the board will have a chance to ask questions when we get to the action item under new business. Unless there's more to the presentation. All right, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and open the public hearing officially at nine forty-seven? And so this is a time for members of the public to come forward, and our rules of order allow up to five minutes for comments of, or, or statements during a public hearing. So usually we go first to those who are present, and then we turn to those who are participating remotely. Are there members of the public present who would like to speak during the public hearing? Please come forward. And you each have five minutes, up to five minutes.
I don't need all five. Matthias Power, resident of Trailwoods. The first comment, I really commend that we proceed forward with paving the roads. That is very much appreciated. But at the same time, I was surprised, and I think those plans were in place since two thousand and fifteen. Since you know the road will move.
We knew the road was moved, or was going to move to some degree. We didn't know the extent. That was, that was part of the road improvement agreement that the road commission signed, which then became part of the development agreement that the township signed. So not that the whole world was, yeah.
Whatever. There were some things known before, and I've read out the plans, the date at the bottom as well, and it's many, many years ago. The, the master deed says something different that I purchased into, so, and just, Mr. Iser, thank you very much for bringing that up. I am concerned. I am using that space, and I am liking that open space. And I am concerned for losing space in that. There is not a whole lot there. Half an acre will be lost. Yes, some of it is already with weird trees and so on, but the berm will also make it not very usable, to make it actually real usable, open, open, flat surface. As I really would like to see and propose that we figure something out, so not, again, I appreciate the paving of the road, the promise there, that is very much appreciated. But would proceed forward, saying it's a loss to me, that's a loss to my family, that's a loss to many residents. That is one of those free, open spaces with a larger flat surface. And if you can figure out a solution to proceed forward with both of those, and find solutions, and Mr. Iser, you alluded to some ideas here. I'm curious to what we see, but thank you very much, and thank you very much for one minute and forty-five, forty-three seconds.
Clarifying question. Matthias?
Yes.
I just want to ask a clarifying question. So the space here, or, or to you as well, David, the space here is, is under whose?
It's, so, who's?
Space is this that you're using? Who has control of it?
The HOA.
The HOA does.
It's an open space used by everybody, yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Uh, so Vitalya Ivanov, also Trailwoods resident. I second everything that Matthias has said. Again, it's not so much the fact that, like, great, appreciate it, kind of the nature of the beast, that you, you're planting these trees sucks, you have to replant them, get it, nature of duty business. Where the concern is, is again, losing this, this space. For context, won't matter to you, probably won't matter to you. When we were buying our house with Toll, we were told that there would be a community, oh, like, the developers thinking about, like, uh, some sort of. uh, some sort of open space, like we have, hey, we have kids, we have, we want a park, again, that's not on you, that's not something that you communicated, but like we, a lot of residents went, went in with like a large, uh, community with a lot of kids. Uh, there are some residents that don't have kids that might not, might oppose this, but, uh, again, this is my concern. I have kids, I have, I have a dog and I use that open space. Uh, we use that, the, the open space to kick the ball around, things like that, so. Uh, second that, uh, very much for what Matthias was saying about the open space. Uh, secondly, and I, I, you probably missed my, uh, open comment for, uh, what would really love to see is like, just want some accountability of the work that you guys do. Uh, I want to believe, you'll, you'll plant trees. Uh, we have trees that are planted, um, that died, uh, after the year is, 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 is over. Uh, some of these open areas like by the mailboxes, um, there's, there's grass planted, but it's sporadic, so. Like, I want to believe you. I think you're doing the right thing, I really do. Uh, but I, I also want an accountability. The fact that we don't have an A, A, HOA that we don't, we can't be on the same level playing field as you, uh, is, is frustrating. Uh, it's, the process is what the process is, but, uh. But, but advisor, I think that the, the, it's a power imbalance and what, what I'm concerned with is like, right now you've got the power, once the, the development's done, you, you, you'll leave, right? Like, so, uh, we can advise you all you want and like, I don't know how, do you, if you want me to sit on this advisory and point out like, dead trees and things like that?
Oh, I, I, I mean, the advisory committee, we sat down, I'm, we've no other way of contacting you, so we, all of you, so we.
That's not me.
All right, yeah, no, no, but if, if you want to be on it, uh, just go onto the portal and.
We'll do that. That's not the point that I'm making, yeah. Uh, so again, just want, just want, want that, that, uh, ability to, to make sure that, like, you do what you, what, what you're telling and then this, this loss of space, uh, that is, that is better for the community, that you're, you're developing a community, so like, that we want to see kind of thrive and then go through, so. That's what we're going to say.
Thank you, Vitalya.
Quick question. Is a bond an option for this process, uh, to address their concerns about this, uh, this power difference? That you can leave anytime, well, you can leave at the end of the project, but would a bond invoked by the board help to, uh?
There, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I'm talking about an additional bond for this particular project, just an idea.
Hello, Kathleen Brand. Um, I, I've been wondering, and this, these are the kind of questions I would ask if I was, um, a trustee, so, uh, uh, ask you guys, so if I understand it, plans are given to Eagle and Eagle accepts or declines them, is what I'm hearing. But how would anyone know that that was the best plan? So if the process is simply that the developer's going to give Eagle a plan and there's no input on a better way to do it. So it's a process that is just, give me what you think and Eagle will approve or deny it. But how does the township or the residents know that that is the best way to do it? In that it's not necessarily influenced by the economics of the situation? Maybe there is a better way, uh, to configure this that would get Eagle approval. But there's no feedback loop for, is this the best solution? So it's just whatever solution is provided by the developer. So those are the kind of questions I would ask. And, um, that's all I had to say.
I'd like to respond to her.
Go ahead, sorry.
Um, I believe our civil engineer does participate and give, give feedback to the Eagle.
And we have OHM on.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yes.
Again, is he on right now?
He is. Right, but, but, um, for clarity, does OHM evaluate the plan as the best solution? Or do they evaluate the plan as given? And the regulations from Eagle and the feedback from Eagle? Because there's. Right, because there's a distinction there, right, that, um, it just makes me wonder that how, how does, how does the township know that's the best plan if, send it to Eagle, they say yea or nay. They didn't like it. Send them another one. They didn't like it.
Right, yeah.
You guys can carry, you guys can carry that discussion on.
Hi, Matt.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Really well.
Okay, sorry. I'll use my, I'll speak quieter.
Inside voice.
What's, what's interesting about this project and, and I know David and Scott are there, but this was all part of a road improvement agreement with the road commission. So this is more or less triggered by that agreement. It is referenced in the PUD agreement. But this whole review, um, normally is, you know, as this developed, the site plan was approved and moved forward by, you know, the BOT back when this Trailwoods first kicked off. I think it started off as being called Honey Creek. Um, but it was all approved and then the RIA, the Road Improvement Agreement with the Road Commission was still underway. And Scott did a good job of kind of explaining how it evolved, um, oh, between twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Uh, to get back to Mrs. Brand's comment, she, she's right. I mean, we would normally, as part of a full-blown site plan process, look at, you know, how things fit. There's engineering standards, there's things to do, but we were pretty much out of the loop on this one. This was really, uh, a process that the applicant worked with, the road commission, the drain office and Eagle. Um, it's really road geometrics, had it impacted water, sewer, something that's township owned. We would have gotten a lot more involved, um, during that review process, but because it didn't, engineering wasn't really asked to, to review it. You know, looking at this from a practicality standpoint, there's a lot of, you know, definitions. How do you define best? The, the road geometric design that this design solution moves forward is the best and safest. The creek crossing, because you're not relocating hundreds and hundreds of feet of creek, environmentally, that could be considered the best solution. That's why Eagle favors it. And then just from a road maintenance and road fixing standpoint, which the township contributes money towards all culvert fixes, you got to remember that. This is the shortest, smallest culvert and reduces the number of culverts. So in my opinion, although it may not be the best solution for maximizing the rear yard open space for the residents, from an infrastructure standpoint, it is the best solution. So I did weigh in. Um, I've been very involved in this since the stake showed up and we got pulled into it. And, uh, spent a lot of time vetting it, spent a lot of time talking to the road commission, water resources, have not spoke to Eagle, but, um, just getting a hold of them these days is, is a challenge sometimes. Um, but I, I do think that the solution that was put forward in the grand scheme of things, road commission, traffic and safety, environment. And the fact that the applicant went through the public process, met with the, the residents, um, worked with them, I, I honestly think that moving this forward is, is the best way forward to get the roads paved. Um, the culvert fixed and then eventually the bridge to the north fixed, because um, from an environmental standpoint, getting these roads paved, getting every, all the dust, all the, all the safety potential hazards with the dirt road, with the volume of traffic that's going to be coming down Park and Stabler, I do think this is ultimately the best solution, so. That's my opinion. Um, that's very much an opinion, so.
Thank you, Matt. That was helpful.
Thank you.
Are there further public comments during the public hearing?
I have about one. Judy Monk, um, my question is, if I, should I direct it to them?
Direct it this way.
Okay, direct it to you, okay. Um, during their presentation, they made the comment that it was approved by the residents, that they had talked to the residents and embraced the residents and modified it for the residents. But we're hearing some input from residents that they're not on board with it. So I'd like maybe that address this difference between what I hear them saying and what I'm hearing residents saying. So just a little bit of additional information.
I think that's a good question. Like, if you could just give an overview of what the resident engagement has been and how their concerns have been considered.
We, when we found out that this was a problem for, uh, when the, when we were about to start construction, we found that there was a problem. Um, we stopped construction, we set up a meeting in the township hall, we were here for two, three hours. Uh, we got everyone's comments, which, uh, were conflicting. Um, just so you have a sense of it, I, I probably if we had written down who's on which side, half the people who were there, who were, this was not just a residence only meeting, this was the whole township was invited. Half of them didn't want the road paved at all, uh, because then they thought people were speeding too much on a paved surface there and it would be dangerous. The other half were saying, well, we, uh, we want the paving because then it'll be safer. And then there was a lot of discussions about speed limits, which are all in the road commission's hands. Uh, so we took all those town halls and we realized that the biggest issue that everybody was having was that the road was getting closer to where people were living. So our primary goal was to get the road away from where the residents were. And then we had, then Scott went to work trying to figure out if he could do it. Uh, we came up with three different alternatives. Um, Scott met with Eagle. Unfortunately, Eagle doesn't tell you no to this, yes to this, yes to this. You sort of have to read between the lines because until you actually apply for a permit, uh, they won't give you answers. But in the scheme of the three different options that we had, it was very clear to Scott that, but that the, uh, the option that ultimately we chose was something that was most favorable to Eagle.
But that was the question, the question was.
I'm getting there.
Yeah, the question was.
Okay, I, so, so then we went and we, uh, because the people that are primarily impacted by the shifting of the road are the people who live directly behind there. We had a meeting with, with those families. Uh, we presented all three options so they could see, uh, which ones, what we had. And out of the three options, those residents chose that option. Um, at that point, we said, okay, the most impacted people here are those homeowners who live directly behind it. Uh, we just, they said they wanted significant landscaping added along behind their homes. So we prepared a landscape plan, we, uh, brought it back to them. They asked us to extend the berms, uh, because they wanted, uh, less possibility of, of, uh, headlights, headlights coming at them. So extended the berms, added more landscaping and ultimately we went through and, and, uh, they were satisfied with what we were doing. Um, it's not a perfect solution. I wish I had a perfect solution. As you said, it's, uh, a sandwich of sorts.
And I want to acknowledge, you've done a good job of resident engagement. I want to acknowledge you for that because I know you've gone above and beyond what a lot, lot of other developers have done.
We're, we're trying to. The problem we're kind of running into is at some point the road commission is going to say enough is enough and they'll pull out a letter of credit, which is fine, but then they're going to go build the road. And I don't know whether they'll put any landscaping in at all. So we're trying to get something that's, understanding that it's a compromise, we're trying to find something that works for them. Uh, you know, we're not happy about having to rebuild all the landscaping and, um, as far as the question about financial stuff. And at this point, uh, we're probably three times over budget. So this isn't about us trying to save money. We're just trying to get this done the best we can.
I appreciate that.
I, I want to make sure we, uh, we get all of the public who want to speak during the public hearing. I, are there any more people present in the hall who want to speak during this public hearing?
Can I just clarify, my, like, just a quick clarification, not opposed to this, this isn't, this isn't say, it's a more ensuring that it's done right. That's what we want. We want it done right. That's, that's the only thing. So not, not opposed to this, understand all the intricacies. So like, don't want to hold it up anymore, don't want like, yeah.
I, I, I understood, I, uh.
And it was, yeah, it was not even reading.
Understood.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's turn to, uh, folks who are, um, want to speak during the public hearing, who are participating remotely.
I want to go to Nick Ehrlich because he's been so persistent with his hand. Nick, you're on.
Hello, um, uh, thanks. I didn't, didn't mean to be bothersome with the hand.
No.
Uh, I'd like to start with, uh, just a general statement. Uh, my name's Nick Ehrlich. I, I live in Trailwoods. Um, I believe that the developer has worked in good faith over the last year with the residents and to come up with the, the best possible plan, given all the constraints. Um, so, uh, if there's any question about, um, you know, is this the best possible plan? Uh, knowing what I know about all of the different, um, uh, agencies involved here, um, it really does seem, uh, like the best possible plan. Um, and, uh, I, I hope that the board approves it as soon as possible. Um, I did have three questions that, um, I guess someone could just answer directly. Um, first, did I hear correctly that the paving of Park Road as part of Phase Three will not occur until twenty twenty-five season? So you're doing Stabler, you're doing Stabler realignment this season, but then the rest of Park Road is paved until twenty twenty-five?
I, I, I think where there may be a disconnect is that there's, uh, that Trailwoods is responsible for the portion of Park Road that extends to the east and stops, uh, just after Cedar Ridge.
That's correct. I, I understand that. What I'm asking is, what I thought I heard, uh, I think Scott say was that, realigning, uh, Stabler as it goes into Park Road would happen this season. And that the rest of Phase Three, which is paving Park Road from Stabler to Cedar Ridge, would not happen until twenty twenty-five. Did I hear it correctly or not?
I, I think what he meant, or what was intended is that, um, it's that section after Cedar Ridge, between Cedar Ridge and Zeeb that he was referring to as being a later phase. Because that's not the developer's responsibility.
That's, that's on his plan and indicated as Phase Four. That was my next question. Um, but can I get Scott to clarify? I mean, uh, where are, it will, is all of Phase Three intended to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-four?
That's correct. And Phase Three consists of the remaining, uh, reconstruction of Stabler Road to the intersection of Park. And that portion of Park that extends from Stabler Road easterly past the entrances to, um, Country French and Arbor Point subdivision. There's a, there's a separate and independent project that will be discussed later tonight that will be designing and repaving the rest of Park Road from the point where we leave off at the entrances to, to Arbor Point and Country French all the way to Zeeb. And that I would not expect to take place until two thousand twenty-six.
Okay.
It hasn't been designed yet and.
Let's, you answered my question. Uh, I have one last question. Is it possible to see a more detailed site plan indicating the before and after of the usable space that's being impacted? Because we're talking about, um, just the space. Um, the road is going to be cutting through a lot of space that is actually unusable of, of, of a bunch of trees. Um, and I really do question the real impact of the way residents are currently using the space. I don't see a lot of people playing football or baseball in that space. I see a lot of people walking through it and I want that space to be, continue to be, uh, good looking. And I want there to be a buffer for the residents down there, but, uh, in terms of a park, um, I don't, I don't know where that's coming from. Um, and, uh, I, I will state, I am a resident with grown children, so I, I don't have that desire. But I, I would like to see, I would like to understand better the real impact of the usable space instead of just talking about something in terms of a blanket point five acres.
I think I have a, I have a drawing in the pack. When we get to the deliberations portion, I can bring them up and show you the differences.
I just want to be clear for the record for the township portion of Park Road. We're going to be telling you about the engineering later, but we have no funding identified for.
So it may not be twenty twenty-six.
It's, it's, it's expectations.
It's a big question mark over that whole thing.
Yeah, about if and when.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else participating remotely who would like to speak during the public hearing?
Um, yes, one person, Dave N. Go ahead, Dave.
Yes, hi, this is Dave Newfer again. I spoke earlier. I live in the Trailwoods subdivision and I just want to make some clarifications. Um, I am on the advisory board and there is indeed a power indifference here. Our advisory board, it has no power, it won't have any power. Um, I am on the advisory board and there is indeed a power indifference here. Our advisory board, it has no power. It won't have any power. Um, and we are losing a half an acre and I do use that half an acre with my children. And the fact that the compromise was negotiated with the three people that live there does nothing for me. As a neighbor who lives on the other side and walks that path with a soccer ball or a first view with my children. Uh, yeah, it's not a huge open space, but the fact remains, the community is losing space. And we have one-sixth of an acre property uh, with our, with our homes. So my two and my four-year-olds have nowhere to play. My, they play in the road, they skin their knees on our little driveways. There's not an appropriate green space. To limit the green space and to downplay the fact that you're eliminating. The very limited green space is not correct. And also to say that fifty-fifty people want it paved, don't want it paved, is also incorrect. A majority of the people want it paved, but when found that the plan is completely different, we had a bit of a, a, a second guesses. So I just want to be a little bit more clear about the, the true feelings and true story here. Yes, you've heard some conflicting messages because you've said some conflicting things. First, we had a nice right angle at Park and Stabler and now we no longer do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Next up is Paula. Paula?
Yeah, um, I'm more interested, um, I guess in the whole paving because I think when I'm um. Have attended or zoomed every road committee, um, you know, it's going to affect, I'm not saying don't pave, but they. There's this whole Parks and Pathway. I'm concerned for the people that live along Park. That they're not uh, going to, because uh, reading that over, it's got a whole thing about selecting certain trees. That those people are not going to have a buffer. And when we, um, Matt uh, Park says, well, I heard it was three million dollars, uh, some other. Uh, I don't know which meeting it was, with the drainage and everything that needs to be done from Zeeb down to uh, the Trailwoods neighborhood. And I have a lot of concern about the cost. And I, it sounds like you don't know where that money is coming from. And about the people that live along there that will no longer have a buffer in their backyard, especially with a. Uh, Parks and Pathway thing that's going to come there. And I saw it's a roundabout now and. All these things because kids do go from Arbor Point over to Country French and we're, we're also talking about safety. I've. Consider, you know, going down Zeeb anymore is a very dangerous proposition, period. People are not driving even forty-five, they are driving sixty. They, they go through those red lights down there at uh, Jackson all the time. And uh, that's our, my, some of my concerns. Anyway, maybe Matt Parks can uh, address that at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. I see no other interested public. Will?
Okay, in that case, um, we will close the public hearing at ten fourteen. And um, turn, at this point, I think to our next agenda item and when we get back to the action item. Um, Trailwoods, then we can uh, address some of these questions that have come up. Oh, I think we should move on. We've got people waiting for other agenda items and um. That will give Scott time to get his images all ready. Um, okay, so um. We have no unfinished business. The first item under new business is possible action to approve the conditional offer of employment to Heather Schmieg. Schmiggy. So um, we, Aurora, why don't you uh, take us through that?
Back, right. So um, as was stated earlier, Heather has twelve-plus years of experience um, in natural resource. Um, along with um, the Florida Forest Service, who's with a lot of experience um, along with project management. Um, currently an operations director for Michigan Nature Resource Association. So. Highly recommended, very impressed with her experience.
So um, I would move to approve a conditional offer of employment to Heather Schmiggy for seventy-four thousand dollars a year to serve as the Parks Preserves. And Pathways Director for Sciop Township, subject to satisfactory background and reference check. And drug tests, that, that's.
Support.
Okay.
Okay, so move by riser, support by Flintoff. Is there further discussion?
I just want to say thank you. She looks like a great candidate. I love the operations project management experience and great job running this process.
Thank you.
And thank you to the uh, folks who served on the interview team as well.
Interview panel. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, in that case, um, why don't we call the roll?
Terry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Pathway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Priso?
Yes.
Motion adopted seven zero. Thank you, Aurora.
We have a new director of Parks, Preserves and Pathways.
Yay.
With much reach of waste. All right, um, that brings us to item K two. Uh, this is uh, the Van Curler Prairie Restoration Project and we have with us um, Rita. And Corn, uh, to speak for the Parks, Preserves and Pathways Committee. We also have.
Bringing you around.
Yeah.
Bria, just to add you as a panelist.
Is there anyone else besides um?
Anybody else besides Bria, Bria?
Is it, is there anyone else participating remotely in the presentation? Okay.
Bria, you're welcome to turn on your camera or share whenever you're ready and uh, Rita's here first.
Thank you. Uh, let me just figure out my thing here and then I will share my screen. And I have my camera on as well.
Hello.
You can see me. Hello. Um, so let me share my screen here.
Can she share her screen? She have that permission? Okay.
Bria, do you want to introduce yourself a bit for the folks here? Yeah, I was just going to pull this up and then uh, get to that. Let's see. Um, first of all, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so yeah, I'll start. Uh, my name is Bria Sheffer. Um, I was the Natural Resource Management Intern at Sciop Township last summer, uh, while Anna Cohen was the director. I did the breeding bird survey and invasive plant survey at West Sciop Preserve. Um, previous to that, I worked with the Michigan DNR uh, on the ecological restoration and management uh, in the state parks. While I was working on my associate own of science degree at Oakland Community College. And I graduated with that uh, this past spring of twenty twenty-three. Uh, I'm currently working in the Natural Resource Department at the Huron Clinton Metro Parks. Uh, working in all thirteen metro parks, about twenty-five thousand acres total. Uh, we do a lot of like ecological management and I also coordinate volunteers. Um, and so to kind of get into the project, it started last fall. Uh, I was in the Michigan Conservation Stewards Program um, through MSU. And that's essentially like teaching the public and professionals about Michigan ecosystems and management. And incorporates field experiences and part of that program was to begin a capstone project that contributes to a conservation in the community. And so for my project, I decided to focus on a prairie restoration at Van Curler Preserve. Um, and Anna was supportive of this. The project focuses on a six-point-five acre prairie in the northern portion of the preserve. Um, and so to begin, I'll just go into like a little bit of the natural history of Van Curler and then I'll get into a little more of the project details. Uh, so here's a map of Van Curler Preserve. Uh, the orange outline is uh, my project focus area. I believe Van Curler is about ninety acres. Uh, there's a trail put in this past summer. Um, that was over, or Anna overseed that uh, trail as well. Um. But this kind of just gives you an idea of where Van Curler is located between Joy Road and Huron River Drive, uh, north of Dexter here on Metro Park. Um, and then we have a little more visual over here on the right side. You can see that field surrounded by woods. And this was a picture taken in August of twenty twenty-three of the field and what it currently looks like. Uh, there's a lot of Canada goldenrod in there. Um, uh, Queen Anne's Lace, which is all those white flowers. So that just gives you a little bit of a visual. So I put in uh, a historical imagery photo. This is Van Curler Preserve in nineteen forty. The green outline is that same field and we can see that it used to be an agricultural field. Um. And so basically everything else kind of reforested, but that section has been left open. And then looking into a little more of the natural history, uh, this is from Michigan Natural Features Inventory. Uh, almost the entirety of Van Curler Preserve was once black oak barren. Uh, and that's essentially a mix of like a prairie and forest ecosystems. You have a lot of tall grasses and flowers. And then some of those forest plants as well with scattered oaks uh, and overstore. You can see the picture here on the right kind of just gives a little visual of that. And black oak barrens, I think, are maybe about one percent left in Michigan. Um, and prairies in general, I think are about two percent left in Michigan of the original. So they're declining. And a lot of that is because of fire suppression. Um, prairies rely on fire to keep the open landscape and to stimulate native plants. And historically, that fire was caused by Native Americans or naturally. Um, so with fire suppression, a lot of our open areas and our natural prairies have grown into woodland or filled them with shrubs. Um, or plowed over and used as fields or built on and. The native prairie plants haven't really reestablished in there. That's kind of what happened in our scenario. It was an old farm field. And now we don't really have our original uh, diversity of native plants. And so my project would be focusing on reestablishing that native ecosystem uh, as the prairie. And so just to describe a little more specifically, um. For the project, I would hope to restore the six-point-five acre field to native prairie ecosystem. Uh, through the use of various management strategies. And then I would install interpretive signage to educate the public about the prairie ecosystems and their management. Um. And so that's kind of the overall idea of this project and it, it could vary in the amount of time until you have those native plants established. Uh, but just to give you a better idea of what this kind of thing is, because I don't know everybody's, you know, background knowledge on all of this. I do have a video uh, from Prairie Restractions Company in Minnesota. And I think they do a good job of kind of giving a little more of a visual and a feel for what this is like. Um, feel free to interrupt if you cannot see or hear the video.
How long is the video?
Thank you. Oh, sorry. It is two and a half minutes.
Oh, all right.
Yep, it's, it's, it's quick.
I often get asked what my favorite wildflower is. And my answer has become very clearly, they're all my favorites. Native prairies are really unique in North America. There's so many intricate relationships between plants and soil and water and insects. It's very, very good. Of the original hundred and seventy-five million acres of prairie in North America, we are down to two or maybe three percent. You know, and thinking about the loss of prairies, I decided that it would be a, a really good, meaningful thing to do, to figure out this puzzle of restoration. Prairie Restoration started in nineteen seventy-seven and our mission has always been to integrate people with native plant communities. And so today we work with a pallet of fifty to a hundred species at Prairie Restoration. We also grow our seed, so we have control of the genetic origin. Much like an artist works with paint, we work with plants.
Native prairie species are tantamount. They're very important to our native pollinators because they've evolved together. Plus, the prairie has a long root system that goes deep underground. And that root system holds the soil in place and prevents soil erosion. And when you prevent soil erosion, you're improving water quality. It's carbon sequestration and that mitigates climate change. The whole thing is just a wonderful ecosystem.
There are so many benefits in terms of soil, water, air, insects, birds, mammals. And increasingly, people are realizing the value. And so we, as a species, are also benefiting from all of those things. To be able to stand in a good wetland or prairie or woodland is an experience that everybody should have. And so I would hope that generations, a hundred years, a thousand years from now can do this.
So I hope that gives a little more of a visual. Um. I saw that video and I thought it did a really good job of kind of being inspiring and giving a good idea of what everything looks like. Uh, but next I'll move into just a brief description of restoration management strategies of a prairie and a prairie restoration. I won't spend too long on it, uh, but I'll give you a, a basic idea. Um, so the first thing, prescribed fire. Uh, Michigan Natural Features Inventory says that reintegrating fire into the landscape is the most important tool. To preserve and restore prairies. Um, it clears the ground of vegetation and it warms the ground, stimulates native plant growth. And historically was a major fa- factor in maintaining those prairie ecosystems. Uh, the next step would be to plant native seed. Uh, native seed mix, that's good for the site. We would want to plant it uh, after a prescribed burn. Uh, when the soil is open, so the seed can contact the soil and it can actually sprout. Much better than if there was a thatch layer on the ground. Um, and then also reseeding in some of those open areas. And then we would also control invasive plants like autumn olive, buckthorn shrubs, uh, Queen Anne's Lace and garlic mustard. Uh, through the use of uh, cutting, herbicide or pulling depending on the plant and season. And so with this specific project, um, prescribed burning and planting the native seed would hopefully begin this fall. Um, and then controlling invasive plants would continue after that or even could begin before that. And so just to give a cost estimate, I talked to many different contractors and I believe you have access to that as well. Um, but here's what I came up with. Uh, David Bornman LLC does prescribed burns, I think, all throughout the Ann Arbor area. Um, and the Metro Parks also hires him to do prescribed burns on their land. He gave me a cost estimate of about three thousand dollars to burn the entire six and a half acres. Um, I recommend maybe closer like four thousand as a budget, just for a little extra room for unexpected costs. Uh, Michigan Wildflower Farm uh, for consultation and seed. They would come out and do an onsite consultation, which is three hundred dollars. And they would give a seed recommendation, um, management plan recommendation. And so that would be essentially an additional uh, professional input. Um, and I, from what I've heard, they're also good to work with. And so the cost estimate I've written there, twelve thousand four hundred eighty for the most expensive seed. Uh, I would recommend that we budget thirteen thousand and fourteen thousand for a little extra room. Uh, and then the last thing is my consulting proposal. So I came into this as like a volunteer. I wanted to do this. I enjoy it. Um, I do this type of work and I want to stay doing it. Um, the Parks, Preserves and Pathways Committee uh, was very supportive and. They encouraged me to propose an hourly rate for myself and that would help me spend more time on the project, uh, be able to get more done, um, and so on. And so my uh, proposal for that would be thirty dollars, thirty dollars per hour and that's based on other employees doing this type of work. Uh, thirty per hour is also a lot less than you would get if you were to hire uh, a contractor with a business. Um, and so with that, the budget recommendation uh, for this year, for the season, about three thousand dollars. And the total recommended twenty twenty-four budget, uh, this project goes through, uh, would be twenty thousand dollars. And with that, uh, thank you for having me here and I'll open it up to thoughts and questions.
Rita, did you want to add anything?
Um, I guess the only thing I want to add is, is I know that we have budgeted money for land improvements for Van Curler. And so it's um, it easily fits into our budget. Um, the money, you know, this was worked out with Anna. Um, before she left, she worked very closely with all this. And so it's. It feels appropriate to me and our board. Definitely approved uh, recommending this.
Parks, Preserves and Pathways Committee.
Exactly, our committee, not our board, our committee.
Are there questions from um? Are there questions from members of the board for either Bria or?
I just want to thank you both for the presentation. Bria, you do some of the best presentations of anybody in town, Chappal, so thank you. I think it sounds great. I am supportive of this idea. I, I want to, and I'm excited to see the prairie restoration. I know we're going to be moving forward soon with the West Sio, you know, tree restoration and all of that work. I had a chance to touch base with Joyce this morning about this and confirmed that we haven't kind of done our due diligence on kind of administrative review, either with, by Chris Chang or Joyce or anybody in the office yet. And so I know we want to move forward with this. But I would think that maybe an appropriate recommendation would be to, I would support this, but to, if we could ask our manager to develop these proposed agreements. In consultation, we could give it, get a chance, get it vetted by our attorney, touch base with Aurora, maybe the new parks director who's coming in. And then maybe return to have this on our consent agenda for July ninth with the expectation that we would approve it. That would be my proposal.
Yeah, I think you're right. You got to have some kind of, you're going to pay your thirty dollars, thirty dollars on the work. You got to have some kind of agreement for that, a hundred percent it makes sense.
Yeah, there, there are three proposed contracts kind of embedded in the idea.
I agree.
And I'd like to know just also how, you know, they would work with the park stewards. We already have two, two part-time people, maybe the skills are different or the time's different. I don't know. Do you have a sense of that, Rita?
Well, the, the stewards are, are sort of expected to be summer employees. And if, you know, a lot of this, I mean, the prescribed burn, the earliest it would happen is in the fall. And we, we'd almost prefer a fall burn just because there's less new life that's, that's in the way of a burn. But Dave Bornerman does these burns, both in the spring and in the fall. If they do that in the spring, it's usually done very, very early in the spring before a lot of things are really happening. So the, the reason that we're coming to this, for this now, coming is, is to sort of try to, in order for Bria to be able to even attempt to schedule something for the fall, we kind of need to get our ducks in a row and, and give her that green light to do that. So anyway, with that said, it's, you know, it's just something that would be very beneficial. It would be nice to get it started while we still have our stewards.
Is, is July ninth, is, would that delay till July ninth to get the, the green light to go forward?
Does that?
Would that cause a problem for anything?
What do you think? Well, yeah, it's two weeks, Bria. I think, I don't know if Bornerman is already scheduling for the fall. Has he given you an idea?
So I know he is scheduling for the fall. He starts with his returning clients and then takes in other clients. So the sooner, the better, I think, with him. But I, I think two weeks would be fine. Like I, I don't think it's like that urgent where it's like, I need to do it tomorrow. I think if I were able to get that scheduled, you know, right away after the next meeting on July ninth, I think that could be good.
And we're talking, we could do it later fall, later, a little bit later in the fall, right? Because it's not like it has to be.
Yeah, the burn itself, yeah.
Action item tonight or do we just ask Joyce and Chris to line, line this up with, with the council and with, with our HR director? And then bring it back for a consent agenda item on July ninth?
We need to jet. I don't think we need to take action. We're going to take action on July ninth.
As long as everybody's in agreement. I mean, I just want to express, I'm completely supportive of this. I don't know if, if everyone.
I'm supportive and that sounds fine.
Yeah, I just want to get it lined up so that we can actually.
Basically, we'll have the contracts, the agreements, so that we can approve all of them at that time.
Right on the consent agenda. Rita, and then give me an opportunity to have our attorney take a look at it as well.
Thank you, Joyce. Or, does the fire department need to be involved?
You know, Dave Bornerman does these burns all the time and they'll take care of.
The fire department's involved in every prescribed burn.
Yeah, that's, that's a process that Dave Bornerman is totally incapable of handling.
Well, they're just scheduling. Or I don't know how it works, so.
I don't know how it works. These are done all the time. So that's just part of, part of it. I'm not, I don't do the burns. I've helped with one and it was a long time ago, so.
They're very cool.
Yeah, it's, it's. I sometimes have a little mixed feeling about it, but I think that it is a really good way. If you're going to do a prairie restoration, you want to do a burn.
Well, yeah, that's not the, I was just wondering if there was a schedule.
Okay, alright.
The fire department.
Thank you. So let's, let's move this along. Thank you very much, Rita, for being here. And thank you, Bria, for your presentation and for putting together this project.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll, we'll be back again with this in a couple of weeks.
But hopefully on consent, so we don't have to take more of your time. Thank you. Alright, thanks.
Okay, so that brings us to the Trailwoods Road Realignment Major PUD Amendment. SP number two four zero zero five, Z O A number two zero two four dash zero three. So this is now the action item for which we received all this material. And Scott, you were going to show us a visual that shows more specifically the the impact on the open space. Because I was trying to look at the diagrams that are included in this packet to determine. I, one of my questions is about the impact on the open space is how much of the impact on the open space is the, is due to the tightening up with pulling the, both the path and the road closer, further east? And how much of it is from the landscaping that is part of the response to the concerns of the three property owners at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah. Trying to pull up. My thing won't load. So there's two things. The actual loss of open space due to the right-of-way is not a loss of usable open space. I think what many people are, are trying to elaborate on is that the berm is creating a loss of open space.
Is your mic on?
We're good.
Oh, okay, alright.
I'm trying to get this.
Yep, okay. I'm reconnecting my VPN so I can get to my files.
Can we just proceed without it?
It's a, it's basically, it's illustrating what I'm just trying to, to explain. Nope, I have no idea why nothing's working.
So is land being lost due to the movement of the road to the east? Or is land being lost because of the creation of a berm, which makes that land less usable to the average resident of Trailwoods?
So land is not being lost where we're creating the berm. It's still remaining in open space. It's just not a flat area of open space anymore.
We're going from a field to a ski hill.
Yes.
Give him enough time to actually bring up the files so we have a visual rather than just words.
He's working on it, he's working on it, sir.
There we go. This is a little better. So this, this kind of represents where the road is going.
Right, the road.
So the road is going through an area that is not open space, is not usable open space. There'll be, there will be a sidewalk outboard of that. But it doesn't, it's only outboard of this edge of the road by about five feet and it's a ten-foot multipurpose path. And so the rest of all this area remains, main, remains usable open space. Now, it currently is a, a flat field. It's not devoid of any obstacles. There are trees that are all around this that are growing up and getting bigger. But I think that, as I was saying, I think what a lot of people are maybe saying is that they're, they're losing open space in the form of, of usable areas of the, of the subdivision. They're not necessarily saying it's, if you can look in here, you can see all these trees that are dotted here. So this is not just wide open space. This has got, this has got deciduous trees. They're just not showing up because it is the winter time. But there's, there's twenty-five deciduous trees planted in this area here. So it's not an open field. You're not playing baseball in this, in this area. And so it is being, it is being essentially redeveloped for the, basically the benefit of the three residents that live closest to this road relocation. I mean, nobody that lives down in Green Mountain Circle is, is affected negatively by this. So what we did is we met with the people that lived on the court and we said, listen, this is what we can do. We can move the road back twenty feet further away from you. And we can give you, we can give you a berm that will help shield you from, from headlights, road noise, and we can landscape that berm. And so, you know, they felt that that was the best alternative, the, the, really, we could provide to them and, and ultimately agreed to it.
So the berm is going to go on that image between those pine trees and the pathway?
Yep, exactly. All the way back around and wrapped around over here.
And, and this is the open space that people are referring to, that they're, they're going to, that they're going to miss.
I believe so.
When it's, when your plan is implemented.
Yeah.
But you negotiated this plan with the three houses who abut up to that, which seems perfectly reasonable to me.
Correct.
You said we own the property across the street yourself.
I was going to get into that.
Sub-preserve.
Yeah.
It's, it's a nature preserve. It's not, it's not.
Not a dog park.
It's an active-use park.
Sub-preserve.
Is there going to be a crosswalk there?
No.
Is the installation of a crosswalk something that can be later retrofitted? I know it'd be a crosswalk to nowhere, but to the extent that there's recreation opportunities across the stable road in property that we own, be simple, absolute, not a conservation easement, but property that Sio Township owns, is, could a safe crosswalk be put in there to get people safely across the stream for recreation there?
I can't tell you definitively that with, with no preparation. There, crosswalks have to comply with ADA standards and I don't know what we have out there, so.
Is that planning? Was this a topic that came up with planning?
It, it came up, the, the, the loss of
The crosswalk?
No, no, not at all. Not, not a planning. No, no, I'm going to support this tonight.
Okay.
I, I'm going to support this tonight. But I, I know residents have reached out that, and I know they're accommodating the cul-de-sac residents, but there are other residents who will, who, who lament the loss of space inward, residents inward of that space. And I, I don't want to get too bogged down on it. But, but if there are other opportunities for recreation that, that, that are in that area, that's a, a future conversation I get. But one of it is, I guess people could always jaywalk over there and use the property. But there, you know, there's got to be a better way and is, is.
I, I'm not criticizing it. I just didn't know, a crosswalk is something that takes some technical planning. So I didn't know.
I get it. That's what I'm asking is, to the, how, how retrofittable is that intersection for a crosswalk?
Well, I'm, I'm sure the crosswalk could be fit in there once it's studied and, and designed.
And maybe that's a question for parks. I don't know.
Well, I don't know whose crosswalk that would be.
No, I, I.
It'd be a county.
You're in the road right away.
That would be the road commission, I think, John.
No, but.
And it may not be the best place for the crosswalk either.
I, I appreciate that too.
To accomplish what you're.
Maybe it's, maybe it's farther.
Surprising amount of study that goes into crosswalks, their location and their design. Most people think you just lead up, lead up to the edge of the road and you've got a crosswalk and it's a lot more complicated than that.
And you have some plans to show us the plans of how it, let's say, it, it's approved and everything's fit where it's supposed to. Do you have a concept plan that is not like this? So.
Do you have a plan?
There's, there's the last pages of the packet, actually. I think have trees and the, the new layout.
Well, then to bring it up so everyone can see.
I do, Jillian, it's just for some reason, everything is just crashing. I, my drawings are half-loading for some reason.
They're tired.
Yeah.
But it's not our internet. I don't know, I don't get connection.
I'm just, I'm trying to.
The last, the last couple of pages of
Yeah.
the packet for this have, I think, when and so if people are trying to look at this at home, they can, they can look at the meaning packet and they can find the images.
So up now on my screen is a, is a grading plan. It shows the berm.
And this was recommended unanimously by the planning commission, correct? So our planners recommending this, our engineers recommending this. I, I heard Matt Park say, you know, for road safety, for infrastructure, for waterway, it's the best plan. I appreciate the work you've done with residents. I, I acknowledge not everybody's happy, but it seems like this was a road commission, you know, requirement that we need to move forward with. But I think the residents raised some good points about how we, you know, monitor developers. I think you're a very responsible developer to work with, David. But I think it's something we can look at as a township to see how we can kind of better hold developers responsible for coming through. But, I mean, I'm supportive of this and don't have any more questions.
I, I think the, the issue of the, the need for places for children to play, younger children to play within Trailwoods, I think that's a problem that's not really for the township to solve, although there may be some way that we can be supportive. I think, you know, John, Riser was, trustee Riser was trying to sort of start thinking about options. But it's going to be a longer-term solution and the solution may actually be in the hands of the HOA once the HOA has the authority to, to, to look at different options.
The problem becomes as soon, because we've had some conversations about it, we had it at the planning commission as well. And the problem is, as soon as you go ahead and you say, okay, well, let's go put a park here and it's extra five existing homes.
Residents will say not your five act.
You're just creating, if the HOA can push that through, you know, we're not opposed to that. It, but I mean, trying to change, you can see just this changes, you know, cause.
It's not really time for asking. Are there further questions from members of the board?
No.
Okay, someone prepared to make the model motion? Okay, so model motion moved by Brzeo, support by Noel to approve SP number two four zero zero five and Z O A number two zero two, twenty twenty-four dash zero three. Trailwoods BUD, based on the planning commission recommendation of approval of the amendment to relocate the existing drain creek and relocate stable road and the associated right-of-way, the conversion of point five, six acres of open space to right-of-way, removal of twenty-five previously planted greenbelt trees and removal of eleven existing onsite trees with the following conditions. The only condition is permit to be granted by Eagle. Please call the roll.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flinthawk? Yes, Brzeo?
Yes.
Motion adopted seven zero. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that brings us to possible action. Park road engineering proposal from OHM and I believe you're bringing up our OHM representatives.
Hey, Matt, welcome.
Hey. I am here.
I am here. Mark Locke is probably on line two. He's the project manager on the job, so. I probably can answer most of the questions, but if there's anything technical that comes up, he'd probably be better suited. So if he could get promoted to panelist, that'd be great.
You got it. Mark brings you in as panel.
Thank you, Justin.
Yep. Yeah. Hi, Mark.
Who's the computer there?
Hello, how are how is everyone this evening?
We're good, good, good.
You guys say connect, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so Joyce, this is an agenda item that you are. The leader, would you like to lead us through it?
Actually, the proposal related to. This particular with the Zee Road project is included in the capital improvement plan. And the funding for the project is the M E B C funding. And the dollars are available in order to move forward. I guess I'll turn it over to Matt. And find out if there's any other comments you'd like to share.
Sure. Yeah, in your packet, we prepared a proposal dated June eleventh. This is kind of the second part. To the preliminary engineering that was done. If you recall, I don't know, a little over a year ago. O H M was authorized to perform topographic survey, a geotechnical report. We did a drainage study. And basically worked with, actually, Trailwoods, Scott. And picking up kind of where they're gonna pave to and extending the pavement to Zee Road. Since our preliminary engineering report was done and provided to the township. The township held a meeting with the road commission. Initially during the study phase. Intersection improvements at Z were going to be necessary. We met with them. They're actually focused on. Procuring some different grant and federal funds for that intersection that could potentially take several years. But they have looked at different intersection improvements. That is not included in this. That is not something that the road commission is asking the township at this time to. To to build primarily because Zee is a primary road. There may be some kind of participation in the future, but this proposal is simply just to finish off the the paving. Picking up again, it's from Cedar Ridge East. And then the other keynote and somebody mentioned it earlier in public comment or during one of the other items. This also picks up the pathway that Trailwoods is going to build and then extends it east to Zeeb as well. So. Part of that east-west pathway corridor. Right now, everything's been very preliminarily designed. For purposes of budgeting. For purposes of drainage, we looked at some good solutions and work with the road commission on that. And there's very, very viable. Drainage solutions, much less expensive than what we had originally thought. And it would actually improve the drainage near that Zee Road Park Road intersection. So anyway, this proposal is really just to take what we would call thirty percent plans to a hundred percent. Mark can get into the details, but the trail is, the pathway is part of it. Very similar to Zee Road where we would navigate and avoid landmark trees. I heard one resident mention how those houses would be impacted. But I think O H M's done a pretty good job in the past of preserving trees and critical woodlands. And also the way we've shifted the road, Mark can talk a little bit more about this if necessary. But we shifted the road a little bit to the south to provide as much room as possible on the north to make as least amount of impact to the houses. But that's why this needs to be designed. Again, we're only at thirty percent. The devil's in the details from thirty to a hundred percent. The goal would be to design this. Set the township up to bid this where you could utilize the M E D C funding you've secured. And at least give you the option to to move this forward in in twenty twenty six. I think somebody else asked that question, a Trail Trailwoods resident and Scott chimed in and I think you said something. But yeah, this is basically authorizing us for this now would get us through in in a position to bid this in. End of twenty twenty four for potential twenty twenty five construction, not twenty six. Intersection work that would be later would probably happen in twenty six or twenty seven, and that would be done completely by the road commission. In terms of the design.
Okay, and and as as Clerk Flintoff pointed out, the the funding for the actual construction is not settled. We we only have a portion of that in the grant and so we this. But the grant will pay for this engineering to be completed so that we're in a position. When when we do, when the township does secure the funds, if the township chooses to go forward. It will be in a position to do so. Obviously can't do it. You can't bid unless you have the engineering complete.
Yep, correct, correct. Mark, I don't know if I missed on anything from an engineering estimate standpoint or just. Overall design, but.
No, I I think you covered it pretty good, Matt. You know, obviously there's some drainage needs on on both park and Zee Road. We've accounted for that. We're gonna be sending some of the water westward towards the Trailwoods project and some of it eastward into the Zee corridor. So that 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 under underground drainage system is all part of the project as well. A lot of it's gonna be coordinating then with a future project, what to do with the intersection. That's that's kind of the big project or the more more expensive project.
Are there questions from members of the board?
Say, I'm I'm supportive of this. I just want to know, end of twenty twenty four is coming quickly. And so in terms of actually identifying feasible funding sources, I mean, we need to start looking at that now.
And this will really get us a step further in that process in the sense that you'll have the project ready. In terms of bidding and ready for construction.
We'll have a better idea of how much it will cost.
Right, but we know it's much more than what we have.
Right.
And so we need to identify, I mean. I mean, there there's only so many more grants that are going to come. I don't think that's it. I know there's been discussion. We've we've looked in the past at potential special assessment. I understand that that's off the table.
Well, and we have the road millage that will be proposed. Next year, I believe. So we if we knew how much, at least the paving part, the when the parks. And pathways cover the.
I mean, right now, because we don't have a roads millage, we, you know, and and so that would have to be something. A board would have to put on the ballot and people approve. Or we assess at the board table without a vote. That's one option. The second option is a creative special assessment. I've heard different opinions about if that's possible or not, given that there's not frontage there with those two subs. Other than that, I mean, those are the two realistic ways to fund this road. So I'm. Not trying to be Debbie Downer here, I'm just saying, we're gonna, I want to make sure if we're spending money on engineering, we have a realistic.
Right.
Options for how we would actually pave this road.
But it's eventually going to be done. So I think that the engineering is really necessary.
Right. Okay, so the engineering, Matt, it doesn't expire for a couple of years. If if it takes us a couple more years, then that will be okay.
Yeah, the only thing, I I'm not sure how leftover M E D C funds would work, but that all said. But actually, looking at the schedule that we, Mark and I wrote in up in the proposal, it has us wrapping up about April of twenty five. And ready for bid. We could postpone that bid, but yeah, I mean, to your point, if. If you guys are not ready to bid, it can be shelved and be shovel ready and, you know, other grants, other opportunities, other funding sources could be looked for. And this could be held back for a year or two, and I don't necessarily think it would facilitate redesign and. It would, it would probably just be, you would let us know and then we would put it out for bid at that time. Or you could you could shelve it. And figure out if the road commission got their funding, then you could couple the two together. And bid it as one larger project, and you might even see an economy of scale then, but that all said. You know, depending on the type of funding that the road commission sees, and it might be federal, that might change the. The dynamic of this project. So there's some disadvantages to that too, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure somebody here is trying to identify funding sources. I don't know.
So so we have motion, I mean, trustee Brazil has made the model motion to authorize the township manager to sign the attached proposal. For Park Road Final Engineering for Paving and Pathway Improvements, Zee Road to Cedar Ridge Drive. And to authorize payment of up to a hundred and thirty five thousand for tasks one through seven. From the M E D C grant funds received from the state of Michigan for this project. Is there a second?
Second support.
Okay, so support, support by Noel. Please call the roll.
Harry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Pathway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, Brazil? Motion adopted seven zero.
Great. Thank you.
Matt, don't leave.
He's gonna stick around. He's got another.
I'm gonna keep Mark, I'm gonna keep Mark on then too.
I have a question though on this. Will you be addressing, you mentioned the drainage. Some of it going west, some of it going east. You know, the problem on the east side already.
Yep.
Do you think we can help alleviate that for those people?
I think we can help reduce it for those people. Alleviate is a strong word.
Well, okay, I used the wrong word, but I'm thinking.
Say it better.
Yeah.
Say it better, yeah.
I think I think I think it will, I think it will definitely make things better.
Okay, good.
Ameliorate it.
Well, whatever. We could do something.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you. We'll move on then to item K five. This is a Zee Road Pathway Phase Five Engineering Proposal from. O H M and Township Manager Parker.
Again, this particular project is included in our capital improvement plan. Funding is available with the M E D C grant funds and. There's been quite a bit of discussion in the past related to the project. I think as part of the package. There's an analysis through PMGAP indicating that there is a potential funding availability. In order to move forward with the project. And I'll turn it over to Matt again for any other comments.
Okay, thank you, Joyce. June seventh proposal in your packet. This one is. There's all, this is a heavy lift. This is a big, big proposal, a big, a lot of engineering left to do. We've already done preliminary engineering similar to the previous project, gotten this designed to about forty percent, but this includes. Heavy duty retaining wall. I know Chris Chang is has been working with some potential property owners and. And we're hopeful to get that moving along here sooner than later, but the bridge over the Huron. The M dot rail crossing is a potentially eighteen month to twenty four month permitting. And then some switchbacks. So this is kind of the the grand finale of the Zee Road Pathway saga. It connects the existing pathway to the border to border, which is well underway and and in place here. There's a lot of technical detail permitting, natural rivers. You name it, this project has it. So I'll shut up and Mark is available to answer any questions, but the sooner we can get going on this one, the better. This one, this one, we need every potential month to get going on this if we're to build it on time.
We did, we did talk this through. There was a presentation and then part of what we talked about at that time was. The ability of using the Phase Six Z Road Pathway Funding for this, which we now have permission to do.
So official okay, right? We got the letter or something, right?
Yes, yeah, we got it.
So this is still M E D C funded? We still got backing for this?
For the engineering, yeah.
I have no questions, but maybe you folks do.
Right, well, if someone's ready to make the model motion.
I'll make it.
All right, so, okay, so support, well, I'm sorry, the bottom motion made by trustee Brazil, support by Noel. To authorize the township manager to sign the attached proposal for Zee Road Non-Motorized Shared Use Pathway Phase Five Final Design. South of Peters Road to south of Huron River Drive and to authorize payment of up to. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for tasks one through nine from the M E D C grant funds received from the state of Michigan for this project. Please call the roll.
Harry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Pathway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, Brazil? Motion adopted seven zero. And just a good comment, thank you, Matt, for that. I'm interested at some point in seeing an example of the rapid flashing beacon. That's in your proposal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we we can make a field trip or we can provide a summary, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you all.
Thanks. Okay, that brings us to item G six. This was item added at the beginning of the meeting. This is the Natural Resources Conservation Service, R C P P proposal. And there's Barry, just in time. All right, so this was added late and distributed to the members of the board. So you have had. A little time to look at it, but not a lot, and Barry's here to answer any questions that folks have. And so I will turn it over to you, Barry, if you wanted to make any introductory comments or just turn it over immediately to questions.
Uh, I'll make a couple of introductory comments. So the the request for the board tonight is to authorize supervisor to sign a letter that's been provided to you. In support of a proposal that's being submitted for a federal grant program that's called Resource Conservation Partnership Program. R C P P. And the idea is that we're gonna work together with other land preservation organizations here in the area. In our Greenbelt, Washington County Parks, the other townships that have dedicated villages. And apply for a dedicated twenty five million dollar grant from the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is a. Subset of the US Department of Agriculture. And we can use that twenty five million dollars of federal funds to match our own money to buy conservation easements on farmland and on natural areas. So each one of the partners is saying we'd like to put in so much money. And be able to have access to that much money from the federal grant from there. So that's the quick and dirty on it. And and the action is to support the signature on the letter that the application is due a week from today. And this all came together just in the last couple of weeks. Like it's like it's a huge undertaking to put these proposals together. And none of the partners wanted to do it, and then Legacy Land Conservancy stepped forward just like two weeks ago and said, okay, we'll do it. And so we're just kind of scrambling to throw everything together.
Then Noel. Attorney, think that you had a suggestion or two in terms of improving the letter, the language of the letter.
The. The commitment sentence says that this R C P P proposal is selected for funding. ZILO Township will provide contributions equal to the total amount of six million dollars over five years to this project. That could be interpreted as a hard commitment to pay six million dollars. So I I suggest that. It's a some somewhere in there, to the extent funds are available. Approved by the board. Well, I. I'd over my own. Add it to the PDF, but. A little bit of. Little hazy, little wiggle room.
A little wordsmithing would would be in order.
So I think i- if if the board is so inclined to pursue it, you can authorize. There's a supervisor and the manager to provide a letter of support. With our assistance.
Right, Joyce had a good edit there.
Yes, subject to funding availability.
Yeah, and I and I'm supportive of Barry. I'm sorry you're here so late. Thank you for being here. We just got this today and I looked at it and I. Can't, help me get to the six million over five years. I don't see it. The six million dollar commitment over five years.
From the township?
Yeah.
We've got about two point seven in the bank right now, and then we have a commitment from the voters for another ten years. This grant would run for five years, and so I just took a portion of expected revenues from future collections and lumped that together.
So the millage brings in about seven hundred thousand a year, five years, that's three point five million. So you're thinking plus one and a half of the fund balance.
None, the entire fund balance.
Okay, okay. So and then and then the cash, I saw on the match, it allows for either cash or in kind. So and then and then the cash, I saw in the match, it allows for either cash or in kind. Why are we being asked to make a cash contribution? I was reading the NOFA and it gives lots of different partner matches. This is the most stringent. Why are we doing that instead of more wiggle room?
More wiggle room?
Yeah.
If I understand your question correctly, so the the idea is that we would get a federal grant award that would cover fifty percent of the value of the development rights as determined by the appraiser. The township is saying we'll cover the other fifty percent. But that other fifty percent could be a combination of township funds, city of Inver Greenbelt funds, Washington County funds, state funds, landowner discounts altogether. We don't know that at this point. And so we are saying we'll cover that six million dollars.
We will say it about two six million dollars.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
We'll tinker with the language of it. I think that's that's the outcome of.
And and that was my only concern is I just wanted to make sure we were making a realistic commitment. And and I I just read through the NOFA today, but I saw the, it's the non-federal cash match, but there's also different in kind matches and things. So I was just wondering, are other partners kind of being asked to promise an equivalent match?
Scioum is the largest of the townships, I can tell you. I don't know what the city and county are.
So that's what I was gonna ask, is like.
Kind of our proportion.
Is the Inver Greenbelt doing a similar commitment letter? And is the township nap, natural preservation, are they doing a similar letter?
Yes.
And you know what their, what their.
Being asked for.
Potential financial contributions are as well.
I don't.
Okay.
I can tell you the five townships that I work in, what those commitments are, but I don't know what the secret.
Are is that public information?
Of course.
It's in a letter that's going to be submitted as part of the grant application. I mean, I don't think it's any great secret.
What are some of those figures?
Inver Township is four million. Webster and Dexter are two million dollars each. Northfield is one million dollars.
But the, if I understand the program correctly, and I was just reading through the same document that the clerk is referring to today, the way that it works is anything that we would put in would only go towards projects that are located within the boundaries of Scioum Township. So what the others are doing, I mean, they're basically saying this is how much we have to work with for projects within our boundaries.
Correct.
But we're all sort of like in this consortium candidates for matching funds that will be given to the consortium. So so in in a sense, however much we have to work with, if we can come up with eligible projects, Scioum Township could get more of this pie, this federal money that would be coming to the consortium.
Yeah, that's very possible, that that some of the other partners won't be able to use up the amount that's been allocated to them. And if we've got properties, then we can step in and say, you know, we'll take that. We actually did that for one of the other projects we did here in the township recently.
Are the others also cash?
Yes, everybody's cash. Everybody's got a dedicated village. That's the great thing about this proposal that I think is really going to stand out is we're putting up twenty five million dollars of match to get twenty five million, but it's not like we have to go out and fundraise for it or, you know, we have ideas about how we're going to get money. We have the money either in hand or committed through the voters.
Okay, great.
So we give the voters credit for having the foresight to support land preservation villages.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions for Barry?
Well, I I do have a question. So down at the bottom, it says match is only required for easements and watershed activities. So does this mean that there's other portions that would be paid for by these grants that we wouldn't have to pay back? Because I don't understand this. Match is required for easements and watershed activities. So it almost sounds like the that the money that's coming from the grant would, if it's used for the easements and watershed activities, that that would be where we would pay that. Match.
Right.
But the rest of it, is there more to it that we wouldn't be paying, that we would still be? Does that?
I think I understand your question. And I think the answer is that the money that we're applying for, we matched with local funds and justify the easements themselves, that is, not covering our due diligence costs, appraisal, survey, environmental, my time, legal review, all those kinds of things that we normally do. We just, because we had a short timeframe here, we thought, let's rather than try to mix that into it, which some of those costs can be covered by these grants. But we just said, let's go straightforward with just easement purchases, you know, make it simple.
So with the money that is set aside now, or the you said close to two million that we have?
Almost three.
Almost three, okay. And then because there's sounds like some costs that would not be covered, but would we still have enough money to cover those other costs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Those are, I mean, they're important, but relatively small costs overall. That the buying conservation easement for hundreds of thousands of dollars is the big ticket item.
Okay, right. But it doesn't cover like the administrative costs and things, it's just for the direct cost, which is, which is great.
Yeah, that is the lion's share, but.
We do.
So we need to modify our motion. Do you have a suggestion of how to modify the motion, Mr. Think?
Can shortly.
I want to make sure we are accomplishing what you want of your public. In terms of.
Could we just make the letter subject to your.
Subject to review?
Yes, the legal review.
Signed and reviewed by township council.
Okay, so we just add that to the end of the model motion. Is someone prepared to make that?
I'd like to have it reviewed by the manager and attorney. That's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so trustee Brazil will make the model motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the attached letter committing Scioum Township to participate in the consortium seeking federal regional conservation partnership program grant funds for eligible agricultural and natural open space protection projects within the township subject to attorney review and township manager review.
Yeah, reviewed by the township manager and township attorney.
That's even better. All right, so moved by Brazil, support by Noel. Please call the roll.
Barry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Brazil?
Yes.
Motion adopted seven zero. Thanks, Barry.
Thank you. It's one emphasize that we've been asked to provide the letter by the end of the week, so.
Yeah, we got a deadline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that brings us to the end of our agenda, except for public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the supervision of the board of trustees. We hear first from those who would like to speak who are present. Please come forward and then once we have exhausted all of, you know, literally exhausted everyone here who's present, then we'll turn to those who are participating remotely.
Jeff, hi.
I'll be quick. Jeff Jackson, longtime Scioum resident and crazy endurance runner. I don't always agree with the actions of this board or previous boards, but I have been consistently grateful for the Zeb Road Pathway. I run and bike down Zeb Road year round in all kinds of weather. And when I do so now, I no longer feel like I'm taking my life in my hands until I get to six hundred feet before Peters Road. So for your support to completing the Zeb Road Pathway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Renee Klubek, I've listened intently tonight to the board and I just have three comments. I won't send an email through the week, but I would like to just quickly say to address a couple of comments that were made here this evening. Trustee Brazil, when the minutes from the prior meeting were being approved and some questioning about what should go in or out were presented by clerk Flintoff, you mentioned a phrase and said, I'm just sick of all this noise. I'm going to try and address you directly. I'm tired of all this noise. You know, this is not how Ford Motor would do it. This is not Ford Motor. This is a government board. And the relationship to comment on the noise greatly involves the public audience and that role that you have for this position. You are paid to be here, you are voted in, and I really would appreciate it if you would understand that that noise is what we're giving you for information for the residents that live here in this township. I used to, in my work, I used to talk about the slogan CAT, Communication, Accountability, and Transparency. That's what we get to have at this meeting. So I hope you don't really think that all of your getting in these minutes is noise. The second thing I would like to say is trustee Brett, trustee, excuse me, trustee Riser, in the conversation that was going on for the assessor's report, which I found extremely helpful and interesting, I learned a lot and it helped me to better understand what's going on with the township. At one point, you referenced and said, I just want to put this behind us. I'd like to say this township and the residents, and especially a colleague and another trustee on this board, will not have an easy time of putting it behind us on what has gone on in the recent timeline with this incident that happened here at the board. We all know what we're talking about. And I would just like to suggest that you remember that this not only can't be put behind for your day at this meeting and for perhaps the trustee otherwise that's involved, but it can't be put behind for us. So I appreciate the assessor's report detail and having confirmed information, again, transparency for what we hear. So putting it behind is never going to happen for someone else on this board. So I think it's good to keep that in mind when we're talking about it. It is here. We can learn from it and I hope that'll happen. And lastly, I just quickly want to say in twenty five seconds, Supervisor Hathaway, I agree to your rules. I follow them for my three minutes. I verbally said when a participant was out of control, I said, public comments are closed. And I was told by a resident, I can give you the name, to shut my mouth. It is your responsibility to control this meeting. And if you don't do it, I will take care of it myself. Thank you. My three minutes is up.
Thank you, Renee.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, is there? I addressed you guys earlier. And I I appreciate Ms. Garrett, I think, believe her name is Andrea Garrett's comments. I appreciate her comments that there wasn't fraud. But you, members of this board, accused me of fraud. And four of you have remained silent. And I want you to know that I am looking for an acknowledgement that it is inappropriate for you as our elected officials to use Scioum staff and to target personal and political enemies. That's not unreasonable. I need you, that's what I'm looking for your statements about. It's not about the money, Ms. Palmer. You asked me about the taxes and did I understand how they work? It's not about the money. It's not about the money, Ms. Flintoff. It is about your failure to defend me when your assessor tells you that I did not commit fraud. It's about your failure to stand up when one amongst you abused power and abused their power with staff. Your failure to say anything and support that activity is very disappointing to me. I can't believe it. I can't believe that you can't even say that. It's embarrassing. It's shameful. I believe that we are now ready for those who are participating remotely.
If you'd like to join remotely, please raise your hand. First up is Pam Boyd, followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Pam?
Thank you, Pam Boyd, Scioum Watchdog Scioum Community Newsletter. Supervisor Hathaway, why don't you just disband your fellow board members as you don't seem to respect any of them? Yet again, you seemingly skipped involving your board in your rush to hire Amy Sell. Now, I I like Amy Sell. I respect Amy Sell. Yes, we all know that you can spend up to five thousand dollars on your own, but that doesn't mean you should. And I'll ask the question again, when will this board discuss why Scioum can't keep a manager level employee? You guys have an internal problem and nobody is willing to face it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan?
Yeah, so the only way we're going to be able to solve this problem, Pam, is on August sixth. I think somebody should inform this, there that the staff within the township office worked for the trustees. He's wrong in his assumption and statements. He's also wrong in sitting there demanding for an apology, having had nothing happen to him. I would ignore that kind of patulant behavior if I was you. And I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you, Jonathan. I see no other hand.
Working, Georgia.
By Brazil.
Oh, I'm sorry.
By Riser.
We have one more person. I just noticed that he's, hello.
Wait, wait, did you get it before?
Rob Pattinson, Scioum Township President.
Right, well, three minutes.
First of all, I sincerely apologize to Assistant Assessor Mayoko. Once I was written to that I was being targeted, I started asking questions and she and the assessor's office got run over in this whole process. And I apologize for my part in their stress. At the board meet, at at the last board meeting, the hit list scam came to light. But I, the foundation of that scam declares that I am being targeted for raising my taxes. That claim is impossible. No one at this table can raise an individual resident's taxes. I repeat, the foundation for this scam is impossible. Supervisor Hathaway, why would you forward something you know is impossible? Why would you involve the next door neighbor of trustee Carrie, who has a long history of a contentious attitude towards her? Is that why you picked him? Why didn't you pick me? I'm on that list. At the last meeting, I wrote to you asking twelve questions. You never responded. Why? I read through tonight's six and a half pages of the assessor report. While assessor Garrett refers to under under assessed properties, she never answers the question, why are there under under assessed properties? In the report, she states the audit is over from the Michigan State official who did a minimal audit because there is just one person for eighty three counties, eight hundred and eighty one cities, and one thousand two hundred and forty townships. The best they could do was skim over the accounts. So that audit never was going to find historical assessing irregularities. Now that you have made aware of the assessing irregularities, it's time to bring in the state investigators or investigators yourself. If you can't do it yourselves, you need to bring in the state investigators. All of the people on this board have a fiduciary responsibility, a statutory fiduciary responsibility to protect taxpayer funds. Are any of you going to act on that responsibility? Also, at the last board meeting, you transferred the TFL contract to priority waste. You said you did so on the advice of council, Township Attorney Fink. Could you please explain at the meeting tonight why you advised Scioum to transfer that contract when it had been broken by TFL twice in the week before? First, by not giving thirty days notice and second, by not getting prior approval from Scioum, not to mention the thousands of complaints during this, the, over the duration of this contract. Why is Scioum's position so weak that we have no choice but to transfer? And finally, manager Parker, you have always behaved with professionalism, class, elegance, and grace. Thank you for your service.
Anybody else that's playing?
So we have a motion by Brazil. We have a vote. We have support by Riser. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
At eleven thirty.